It didn't sound good.
Now, what's that mean to you?
That's the Zoom for them.
Yep, testing one, two, three.
All right, we're going to go live in three, two, one.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May 10, 2021 Board of Selectment meeting. If everyone would please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the body of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jason, you've done such a spectacular job. Would you mind continuing proving the warrants, please?
Absolutely. I make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2145 in the amount of $167,347.07.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve bill warrant 2145 in the amount of $1,175,307.15, which breaks down to the town, $117,763.09. Water and sewer, $22,326.68. Payroll withholding, $43,633.97. Light bills, $47,646.90. Pentucket assessment, $920,855.41. Grants, $23,081.10.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Great, seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Terrific. Okay, next we have the approval of the Selectment Minutes for April 12, 2021. Anybody had a chance to look those over, if any objections?
I looked them over, I had no objections. I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Selectment Minutes from April 12, 2021.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Obstain.
Correct. We have the approval of the Selectment Executive Minutes from April 26, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's executive session minutes for April 26, 2020.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Yes. Reading the minutes, visitors by Zoom. Kevin Paco's interim finance director was not participating. No, he wasn't participating by Zoom, just the town attorney.
No, he was present on Zoom, I saw.
Was that right before he went to Aruba? And he was on quarantine?
No, that was...
I'm just trying to find where.
That was 2020.
April 26.
April 26, are we talking about the executive session or April 26?
April 26, executive session minutes.
I recall Kevin being on the Zoom.
Is Kevin available to comment?
He is not. But he typically did not miss a meeting. It would have been very strange.
That's my observation, I was doing the minutes that I did see him.
And you also recall that, Jason?
Yes.
I saw him on the screen, yes.
He might not have been here in person, but I recall he did attend a meeting and he was down at the bottom of the screen.
I said visitors by Zoom, I thought that was the way to say it.
I would suggest that we ask him in some way. I can't vote to approve minutes that appears to be defective.
Wouldn't the Zoom recording show?
I can look it up.
Yeah, that would show the presence of who's on the Zoom, I believe.
Okay.
So, we can just confirm or whatever.
Okay.
And if we need to say that he was there and then left, then I can always put that in.
How are you going to look that up if it was an executive session?
The Zoom call would show.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I buried my microphone, I apologize.
So, we'll table the approval of those executive minutes?
Are we going to release them?
Not yet, no.
Well, they have to be approved or released at some point.
I believe we go into an executive session to discuss releasing and voting executive session minutes out. That's what we have been doing for past years.
Can I make that motion to go on an executive session to release them?
No, it's not posted, we'd have to post an executive session to go into one, you can't just go into one off the cuff. So, we could wait.
Table to the next meeting, I'll make a motion to table to the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
No discussion until then.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yep.
We have the approval of the Selectmen's session minutes from April 26, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve Board of Selectmen's minutes from April 26, 2020.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
2020, why so long ago?
2021.
Uh-huh, yeah, 2021.
Yeah.
Same thing with the other one?
Yeah.
I would best assume correct. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Obstain.
Okay, next we have appointments, appointment of Israel Sri... I'm going to butcher this name no matter what. Tchokochi of Haverhill, Mass. to the part-time seasonal groundskeeper position at this Riverview Cemetery for $13.50 an hour up to 19 hours per week effective May 11, 2021.
I'll make that motion that we hire Israel. This is the time of year that they need somebody over there to assist to get the cemetery cleaned up for Memorial Day. I know in past years, we've sometimes waited till after Memorial Day to get the extra help over there. So, it's great that the Cemetery Commissioners and the Superintendent put this forward now so we can get them over there right away.
I'll second that.
Terrific, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the issue? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, moving over to the next items. We have voting of a chair and vice chair. As you know, the last time, a year ago, our chairman resigned, which called for reorganization. In this case, our chairman decided to self-impose a term limit on himself and did not choose to run. So, we are once again at the reorganization point.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bill O'Neill, the chairman of the board for the next year.
We have a motion, is there a second? Seeing as there's none, motion fails.
I make a motion to appoint Eddie Watson.
I'll second that motion, and I'll second it because of the work that Catherine did on the chair rotation. I know when Mike Wood asked me to follow up and review that, I did. I thought it was absolutely perfect. I just don't think it needs to be formally accepted by the board. So, that's why I will second Ed Watson.
So that I can have a turn as a rotation?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to hear from Ed, what do you see as your job as a chairman of our board?
Yes, I would, it was voted by my colleagues, I would accept the position. I think it's something that is certainly doable. And, yeah, I would have definitely accepted.
How would you determine agendas for our weekly meetings?
How would you determine the agenda items?
Yes.
Agenda items, a lot of them are preset because of things that have to go year after year. Others, requests of the members of Board of Selectmen. And I think everybody has a right to put an agenda item on, as long as it's valid. And then, there are items that come up, sometimes under a discussion on public comment that you can't really have too much to say, so it should be an agenda item. Sometimes there's items that come up under Selectmen's time that where you can't take a vote, so you might need an agenda item on those items. I think other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
What do you think are the priorities for the town right now that we're operating without an interim finance director? And where would you see the Board of Selectmen moving as far as that goes?
I think it's important to, that we need a finance person on board. And we don't see anything on the agenda about that. But, yeah, I think it's very important that we have a finance person on board. If the town does vote to go to a town administrator, that won't be until after July 1. I think temporarily, we need somebody on board, especially after reading the management letter over, the couple of deficiencies, and I think we need somebody to help straighten some of that out. So, I think that's needed.
So, would you wait for votes of the board to act as chairman and take action on things? Would you wait for our board to meet and vote on things?
Well, as you know, the only responsibility of the chairman is to set the agenda and run the meeting. Other than that, that's it.
So, the board would vote on everything else?
They have to.
Any else?
No, that's all, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor?
Yep.
All those opposed?
I'm abstaining.
All those abstain?
Yep, just don't have an opinion at this point, we'll wait to see. We have a motion for a vice chairman?
I'll make a motion to make Kathy Castrenellis, vice chair.
I'll second that.
Silence is deafening.
Well, I think you were just elected chair, so I'm just...
Oh, I think you have to vote.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second.
Oh, I see.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Kathy Castrenellis as vice chairman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, Kathy would be the vice chairman.
Mr. Chair, just for a point of order, I did leave the agenda rather light, as I did not know. I know we reorganize today, so I didn't want to encroach on anyone's agenda, so I purposely left it light.
Okay, thank you. Next order business, posting of the treasurer-collector position. I don't know who had asked for this. Any idea who asked for that?
This was, had been asked for in prior meetings to fill these vacancies that we currently have in order to staff up to meet minimum required levels, just operate sufficiently in the time. And we wanted to be proactive about getting that job description out there so that we weren't waiting to the last second, thereby causing just a longer unsustainable position with nobody at the helm. Holy cow, how many? You got any more microphones back there?
Still waiting for him to charge?
If I could.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So, my recollection is that we have been discussing this, I think, for, I want to say, at least a month. And the thought was that we would post, I believe we have to post the position, and they would come in. If we're able to hire them before July 1, I guess they would have to come in as an assistant treasurer collector. But, the understanding was that we were moving towards the approval of a treasurer-collector position because it is on the annual town meeting warrant. And that would be why we post now, so that we could begin gathering the resumes, so that we wouldn't have to wait even more months during the summer and miss out on possible applicants. So, that's, I think, why there was a push to get these positions, get the job descriptions approved and posted, so that we don't lose any more time.
So, when do you anticipate a job description?
I believe we have a job description already, and if not, I can certainly provide one I've gotten.
I didn't see it in the packet.
Oh, okay, so we'll get a job description for us.
I believe that there should be one for both.
I thought so too, my recollection is we've seen it, but... Where else would get that? But it's a standard job description, there's nothing specific to Groveland in that. So, should we vote at least to get this in process?
Well, anybody got any other comments, Dan, you got anything?
This is on the posting of the treasurer-collector.
Treasurer-collector position.
Yeah.
Is this the finance director?
No, this is a treasurer-collector position.
Okay, can you explain the position? I mean, we don't have a description, so what is the distinction? What's their function, what do they do?
They are the treasurer-collector, that would be their job title. As per state law, I mean, I have a copy of state law on it, if you want to see that.
So, their job is to collect taxes?
Their jobs are set out by the state laws, yes. It's set out by the Mass. General laws.
Well, I mean, at prior meetings, there were issues about collecting a rearrage on back taxes, and there were some issues with that, so...
That's not, the job description is the job description.
Well, I want to know what they're supposed to do, because if they don't do it, I want to know that too.
Okay, I can provide a list of...
You know what I'm saying?
Right, I have a detailed list, I don't know if I have a...
So, are they supposed to collect all the taxes or just some of the taxes?
Obviously, everybody collects all the taxes that are collectible.
I don't know that it's obvious.
Well, I think it is. So, my point is...
Providing a job description and put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Sure. No, we have a meeting before the town meeting.
The only thing I do want to point out is...
One hour before.
This posting was posted once prior and removed, so everything is...
Oh, that too.
Everything is in place. And I think it's important to get it posted, to get the resumes in, because this is our exit strategy to the current contracted position that we have that is filling that position in town right now.
Yep.
And the sooner we exit out of that, the more we save taxpayers money. Because that is an expensive...
Yes.
Contract to have, which we don't have a choice right now because we don't have that position filled. So, I think it's very important that we go ahead and get that posted, so we can start the entire process.
Yeah, look, if we hold it off till the next meeting, I don't see the problem. Bill, you got any comments?
I'm in Jason's camp, the sooner the better. We've gone long enough, this is costing us $2,500 a week. So, I'll make a motion that we post this job ASAP.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Kathy, anything else?
No.
Bill?
No.
Jason?
No.
Dan?
Look up the, it's a standard posting is what you're telling me?
Yes.
Aye.
Nothing fancy.
Standard posting?
Yes.
I just find it difficult to vote on something where we don't have the... We don't have the job description. Something that's important, important is that as far as hours, is this a full-time position, part-time position?
Yeah, those aren't standard items, are they? The duration, the pay.
We have a posted salary and the annual town meeting warrant, and it's a full-time position, which I think is defined in our employee bylaws.
And it was once posted already.
The rates have been disclosed, the benefits, all those things?
Same as any other.
What is the rate?
All we don't want to do is advertise something, and there's a salary error, for instance. Just want to make sure that there's...
Up to the amount in the annual town meeting warrant, we're just going to collect the resumes at this point. I mean, my point is that, and I think Jason's point, we are in a very, very expensive consultant contract right now and creating a bigger deficit by the week, where we could, with everything opening up, potentially get a qualified person into the job now. These consultant positions are quite pricey to keep going, they're not meant to be hired for a long term. And in fact, town council, in approving the procurement of a town treasurer, told us that it could only be a temporary move. So, to me, that means of a short enough duration, because we didn't post it, we procured it, the contract for the consultant. And the consultant is a certified treasurer, I assume, and that's what we're looking to hire, someone fully qualified, because we do not have that expertise in-house right now, and we really need it.
Just looking at the job description, Catherine gave me a copy of it. Supervision required, position works under the direction of the finance director, we don't have one. I'm just looking here for pay, and I don't see it here. I don't see anything related to salary or hours. Dan, I'll hand that over to you.
Let me see if you can find something.
So, we do have a motion and a second.
We're still having a discussion on...
Okay.
This is a complete job description that's available on the town website.
But it could be.
Yes.
Yeah.
How soon can you post it back up?
Just to throw it out there, $2,500 a week times 52 weeks is $130,000 a year.
Yeah, but we still got to do things right, so...
Well, yes, we do, but the only difference between this $2,500 a week and the job description is that one person's an employee and the other person's a contracted consultant. They're both certified treasurers, we're just proposing to at least start collecting the resumes, anticipating that we would be able to hire a treasurer, given what's on our annual town meeting warrant. And, you know, just starting to get ahead a little bit on this path of bringing in the proper qualified people to work in the town and be here every day.
I understand.
Okay, as opposed to like one day a week, which is what the consultant contract calls for.
Mr. Chair, in the second to last paragraph, it says salary is fully negotiable with successful candidates and the town office has a strong benefit package. So, I think there's enough vagary there, that we're not locked in if it's posted. If there's an error, I don't think it'd be fatal, it's fully negotiable, so...
Nice.
I don't know that anybody would get us on anything on that.
Any further comments?
The only other comment I have is, if I remember correctly, Kevin's the one that put all this together prior to leaving.
Yep.
Or becoming a consultant. And I know that I have faith in what he put together, and we did review it...
Yep.
Prior, and I think it's really time to move on it.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll call for all in favor of posting. Opposed, nobody, unanimous. Next was posting of town administrator. I don't know who asked to have this put on, but whoever it was, go ahead.
I believe this was also carried over from the same meeting as the last time we went over the treasurer-collector position. And again, Kevin did put this all together, all in anticipation of being able to fully staff the town hall. And the sooner we act upon it and the sooner we start collecting the resumes, the sooner we'll be able to be in position to make some decisions and fill some of the vacancies that are creating a lot of upheaval in the town hall.
Okay, Kathy?
I would agree with Jason's statements, that I think that we need to stabilize the day-to-day management of this town hall and by the Board of Selectmen taking some action and getting some jobs posted that everyone who works in this town hall is well aware we need. We're showing them that we are hearing what they're saying and we're responding to it. And obviously, posting this and collecting the resumes, we'd have to wait to see the results of our town meeting, but by starting tonight with a vote to do this, we're just taking action towards doing it. We're not doing it until we hire somebody. And we won't do that until town meeting fully discusses and votes on this. So, I just look at this as being more proactive, as opposed to reactive, waiting till after town meeting and then scrambling to post. So, proactive, I say we post, and then we go through town meeting, and we'll know what we're supposed to be doing going forward. And in all likelihood, to be honest, the kind of potential people that might apply for town administrator might possibly be still interested in a financial director job if that were what we end up with. I'm not saying they all would be, but it's possible. Similar qualifications and backgrounds required for both positions. Financial background in public administration and managerial background. So, I think it's proactive.
Catherine, go ahead. Catherine, go ahead.
I do not have a write-up of the Town Administrator, like I do the Treasurer Collector. So someone would need to do that.
I'd be glad to take a run at that using the write-up from the Town Attorney and just, I'd make it as Selectman McDonald to put the right vagisms in there. But, you know, the general core description of the job and duties are in the document that we received from Town Council. And that would be the action that would be put forward on the town meeting floor as well, so.
Bill?
I think it's on here for very much the same reason as the prior item was on here, to be proactive with the situation so we're not lengthening the situation we currently find ourselves in, which is not sustainable in the long run. So I'd make a motion that we post this job again ASAP so that we can begin to gather resumes and find out what we have out there.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion, Dan?
Yeah, I think it's premature. It's not ripe. It's jumping to conclusions that a town meeting will vote in favor of a Town Administrator. I think it's a little bit, it's not just proactive. It's a bit, seems like a flawed conclusion. I think it sends the wrong message to post that. And then if people go to town meetings, say, "What am I voting on?" They already, they already decided it at the Board of Selectmen. I think it's a bit big-headed of us to put that on prior to a vote of town meeting. It's preemptive in terms of the respect for the voters of this town. So I'm absolutely opposed to it. If it passes at a town meeting, does it cost $2,500 a week to wait for this one or just the other one? So if it doesn't cost anything, we can, if it passes the town meeting next week, we just post it thereafter. Simple. It's, time is not of the essence on this particular one. I could see the argument for the other one on, you know, clock is ticking. You're paying a consultant $2,500 a week, you know, sooner you fill the position, the better. But this one, that's not the case. It's not the same set of facts.
Anybody else? Kathy?
Well, just to kind of frame this properly, it is a very similar set of facts. Because depending on what happens at town meeting, we cannot hire a Financial Director and a Treasurer Collector without changing our special act. So, you know, the town has been moving forward towards this and assigning increasing responsibilities to the Financial Director of an administrative nature. And that's why this has evolved to this point. And I feel that to at least start seeing what resumes are out there in advance is at least doing something versus doing nothing. We can't do two things at once. If we post the Treasurer Collector, we should post the Town Administrator. And, you know, I just have confidence that people want the town to be well-managed. And when you talk about the cost of doing nothing for a week, it's, it's hard to quantify the cost. But let me just say that the day-to-day administration of this town is vital.
What do you mean by, what do you mean by doing nothing?
I'm not done with my sentence.
Continue.
You're not the chairman.
Go ahead. Are you done?
Okay, no, would I actually ask him to let me finish what I'm saying before? I'm not going to get cross-examined while I'm in the middle of something.
What's wrong? What's wrong?
Thank you. So I guess my point is just simply that, you know, I'm not trying to be fancy or deceitful. I'm being totally transparent that the day-to-day management of our town is increasingly vital right now. We've been operating, we tried operating with part-time. It does not work. We know that. We've seen the consequences of that. We need to move forward. And this seems the most likely thing to post. And then obviously, if, if a different decision is made at town meeting, we'll have to revisit both of these postings. So for now, I would say post the pair and start to see what's out there. And at least we'll have some idea of the level of interest in, in working for the town of Groveland. I think that would be helpful to us. It doesn't cost us much to post it. And I believe like nothing ventured, nothing gained. I think standing still right now is not the best option. But I hear your concerns, Selectman McDonald, I hear your concerns. I know you're not in favor of the Town Administrator. So I, again, being very transparent, it's not my intention to second-guess the town meeting. I just feel that we do need to start making some, some progress and that this is the best way to go at this moment in time. My decision, my thoughts. That's all.
Now, Dan, any question?
May I respond?
Sure.
Post of the Town Administrator at this time, I think it's premature. I don't know that it would be ripe in a year from now or thereafter. But we, fact of the matter is, we have an interim Finance Director, Kevin. He's working through, I believe, May. And my understanding now that was a resignation. And it's my hope that he would consider coming back. And if that were the case, I would like to.
I have a point of order on this.
You know.
State your point of order.
My point of order is that there is a very highly sensitive confidential agreement that prohibits discussion of this nature at this time until you check with Town Council, please.
Duly noted, go ahead.
Well, it would be, my, well, if, well, is, could we set up a, put it on the agenda to make those, the inquiry, to see if he would be interested? Ask Town Council as well as Kevin and.
I have a point of order again, Chairman, please. What is your grounds for allowing the, continuing the discussion?
It's a question.
I'm asking the chairman.
It's a question. It's a question. Your, what's your point of order?
My point of order is that there is a confidential agreement that was reviewed in executive session by yourself. So you're aware of the contents of the agreement and what was stipulated to, and that it was duly signed.
And to respond to your point of order, so far, he hasn't mentioned anything. He wasn't even at the meeting.
I wasn't there, how can I breach?
He wasn't at the meeting.
No one else in this room can discuss it, so.
I'm, I'm asking questions. Can we revisit the issue? And that's a valid question. I'm not disclosing any confidential information. I was not there. I was not privy to it. And the executive session minutes have not been released, to my understanding. Is that correct? So what is it that I can breach? I'm flying, I'm flying blind here. I'm just trying to make inquiries to what transpired and why and whether or not we could revisit the issue.
I believe.
So I have that right.
You do.
As does anyone else within this town.
Yeah, well, I think as a member of the board, he has privilege to executive session minutes. So why wasn't he provided them?
Can't answer that. I don't, I don't know.
Oh.
I don't know why.
Maybe it wasn't, I have them around him. I mean, I don't really know.
Oh, okay, they're in your package, so. I guess that's what I'm saying, is you have the privilege of reviewing this information.
So, so, Selectman Castellalis, how, how is it procedurally that I can revisit this issue under the law and under the confidentiality agreement that I wasn't present with?
I guess my, my point would be we'd have to.
You're saying that I can't revisit or there's no way?
I don't know what you're saying. I know that you have the agreement, you have not reviewed it. And I'm just saying you need to review it and then you need to ask the proper questions, perhaps in an executive session. This is executive session issue. Yeah.
The, the minutes of that meeting were, were included in the packet, but the confidentiality, confidential agreement was not.
Yes, it is.
I didn't, I didn't have it in here.
I saw it. That's why, because I thought, well, does Catherine still need it? And I said, no, she hasn't. This was a big packet.
It's there.
Right?
It's there.
Oh, okay.
Is it here?
Yeah. It is.
Okay.
The point I'm trying to make, Selectman Castellalis, is there are alternatives to the Town Administrator being posted. There are Plan Bs.
Oh, I know.
There's actually a, there's actually a Plan A.
Okay, I don't know what A and B is.
The current, the current situation and the continuance of that.
Okay.
Okay.
A or B, I don't know.
Anybody else? Anything, anything new? Okay, with the motion on the floor to post the Town Administrator position, all in favor? Oppose? Three to two. Next order of business, town meeting items. Now, this is a, this is, this refer to the town warrant, obviously. Who, at whose request was this one? Who, whose item was this?
I do not recall, Mr. Chair. It might have been in regards to the special warrant we discussed on Friday, which I signed and got in this morning. I think Catherine has, she wants your attention, so.
Yep, Catherine's raising her hand.
Mike would have me put it on the agenda before everything changed to, in case there was any last-minute changes we need to make to the town meeting location, seating requirements, capacity, any, any special things that you guys needed. He just wanted to leave a line item just in case you guys needed to talk about something to do with town meeting setup.
Okay. Is there any, anybody got any comments? Anybody from Finance on the?
Karen Merrill, that's not Finance.
No, I do not see anyone.
Okay. So who wants to start?
I'll start. The, I think that we're really referring to any changes that took place due to COVID restrictions. And I think since they've lightened them up again just recently, I think, I think everything that we have set for the town meeting is good to go.
Okay. Which was in two weeks from tonight. So I know that far as setting up for the, the microphones, that's, that's all set. Who's going to handle the setup of the hall itself? You go ahead. Is that, is that, it's you or is that, did you have a question?
I think a lot of it falls on me. And about Mr. Day, it's going to be how his custodian set things up.
I think in the past, the custodian here at the town hall assisted with the setup.
I don't know what I'm doing, so I hope.
I can help.
We, I know we had last year, last two years, the Selectmen, Town Clerk, Moderator were on the stage. There was some talk about putting everybody down on the same level. I don't remember why that was suggested. Anybody know that? Jason, you remember that?
I think last one, I believe the Selectmen sat below the stage and it was just due to.
Spacing, spacing.
At the time, we were still in lockdown. So I, I think that we left that open just for the similar reason, just for spacing.
Yeah, last year, up and down? I think that was 100% due to COVID, just the social distancing. We couldn't have that many people on stage because the stage wasn't wide enough to maintain a six-foot distance and have everyone on stage.
So we look into, go down below or up on the stage? Down below? Down below, okay. So any other questions on the, on the town meeting setup? Nothing? Okay. That, nothing take, nothing that requires a vote? Consulting Treasurer Collector contract.
Could we, I thought the town meeting, are we ever going to discuss, and I know the Finance Board has some concerns too, some of the articles in the annual town meeting warrant and some of the revenue transfers that we don't have on this warrant that we typically have?
Yeah, we don't see anybody from Finance on.
Right, because they didn't know whether or not we were, I guess, I don't think it was clear that we were going to discuss that. I didn't know for sure either whether we would or wouldn't discuss some of the issues on, on the warrant that we need to, that we will need to make amendments at town meeting about. The water and sewer bond in particular is one.
It's a little tough to discuss it without somebody from the Finance Board.
Do we know who the iPhone is?
No, but I mean, but I mean, we recognize that we had, the initial draft of the omnibus had in here transfers at the front of this article from conservation fees on the VZ Park revolving account. And that language didn't carry over to the posted warrant. That's just one revenue item that we're missing. So I would hope that would be a simple amendment. And.
Dan, was the 40, 40 from the electric?
That, I am told that we can just kind of put that on our tax recap, maybe without having to, it's, it's like Chapter 90, everybody expects it. We may not have to vote that. But I'd be, I would ask Town Council that to confirm, because that's not on the warrant either. Those are the revenue items we typically have. And as well as a letter from the assessors for some money from the overlay surplus, which we typically have that letter in hand by now as well. Usually it's about $50,000 from overlay surplus that we would need. And then on Article 27, we agreed, I believe the vote of the Board of Selectmen was to create the stabilization fund for the firefighter EMT. But we recognize that there'd be no way to fund it this year, given how tight the budget is and the revenue picture as well. So that the language at the end that we're going to raise and appropriate would be taken out, you know, when that article's voted on, we create the fund.
Well, I think Jason was correct at the last meeting when he said that some of those items that were on the warrant that didn't have money figures were going to be addressed at the town meeting.
Okay, but we're two weeks out. So Article 29 wants money for the sick leave buyback. I'd like to get on the accountant, how much money is in that account and whether we even need any money in it. Because it just says a sum of money. So it'd be nice to know the amount of money.
There, there again, Jason, weigh in on that?
Well, we still need somebody to fill those figures prior to.
Mm-hmm. Right.
The town meeting. I would recommend asking Kevin for his input on those figures because I believe he has all of that relatively handy and I think he can get it quickly.
Okay.
Okay.
As long as we have it. And then Article 34, I have gotten comments from residents who saw the posted article for the water mains. And usually this money is, the bonds for this type of thing are paid for by transfers from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. And here it's coming from taxation. And that's not what we do usually, going back in time. So that.
I noticed that in here.
I did get, I got some comments from some residents when they saw the posted warrant on that issue in particular. And I believe someone just recently sent me an old bonding from the Water and Sewer where they, was done from, Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds.
That certainly could be amended on the town meeting floor.
Yeah.
Jason, anything else?
No.
Bill?
No.
Dan?
And just to note that we would need to correct the totals on the omnibus because it was noted in our past meeting that the totals are not correct as well.
It was also noted that they're in the wrong column. That the Finance Board's recommendations should be in the far-right corner and they're kind of stuck in the middle right now.
Are they? Oh, wait.
I believe so. Maybe someone else pointed.
Oh, yes, yes, the Finance Board recommendations are the recommendations that the town moderator reads.
Right.
So we can't move that column at this point.
No, we're just going to have to.
Highlight it.
Highlight it and remind the moderator that, and everyone else in the audience that we're working on a different column than the last 20 years.
Dan, go ahead.
Noted. Noted.
Dan, go ahead.
This is what, relative to?
To the town meeting articles.
I agree with you. I mean, you can make those changes on the town floor, so what do we...
Right, we just have to get them all lined up, that's all. There's quite a few of them, so I'm just saying, you know, be aware that there's a lot.
So, Jason, your suggestion would get Kevin on board to help us over there?
Yes, I believe... Do you have a... You had a bullet point of all the...
I did.
Of everything that you felt that we needed to clarify?
Correct.
So, if we could get that over to Kevin, I think he's already aware of that, because that's why these were written this way, was because there was going to be a motion on the floor that filled in those blanks. And so, I think he has a good handle on that. So, I'd recommend that he can go over that and fix that.
And I remember him saying it would be amended on the floor, but I don't remember why he had something to do with the... Wouldn't have all the figures in, I think it was?
Some of them, yeah. It was different things.
Well, to be specific, let's be specific here. So, there are... First of all, we're doing a special town meeting to take care of the transfers, so there's no need for Article 3, because we're taking care of that specifically in the special. And I think that's the way people are accustomed to seeing things transparent, the amounts posted. So, that will not need any more work on it. And...
Well, perhaps...
So, I can revise that list a little bit. There was something with bond premiums that I'm still not quite sure why we're doing that. It sounds like we're going to take money that we borrowed for something and do something else with it, and I just was not comfortable with that language.
Well, I know he's working as a consultant, but it almost sounds like we need him at the town meeting, Jason.
No, actually, just the consultant would suffice. I just would need...
Kathy.
Have the motion.
Kathy, wait till you recognize.
Sure.
Jason, those questions, don't you think that he should be at the town meeting to address some of those?
I think the first step would be to get him to write it up, so potentially, we could have a meeting prior to the town meeting to make that decision.
Well, we do have a meeting scheduled before the town meeting.
Yeah, that would be perfect, because we could go over it. We could make a decision on whether or not that he would need to be there to either speak or even just to give us clarification. I would probably recommend that he maybe attend the meeting prior, just so we could make sure that we go over everything, we answer any questions that we have, that we have the proper verbiage, and everybody's in agreement on it as we go into town meeting. And if we achieve that, then I would say he wouldn't need to be there at the meeting.
Okay. Kathy?
I agree with Jason. I think that we should understand it well enough so we can say it. If I can't explain it to the town meeting, then I don't want to put it before them. So, I'll take a look at my bullet list, because now that we posted the special town meeting, that changes it a little bit. Definitely, though, those bonds for the water pipes coming out of the tax rate, that's a concern. And of course, the revenue that we don't have coming in, in the warrant that we typically do, is a concern.
Well, we should make sure he can... He gets a copy of these changes, and he can weigh in on that. Maybe he could send this out on email to everybody and explain it. Okay, anything else on the town meeting?
Do we know the capacity at all? Are we okay with... Is it...
With the what?
Capacity indoors. Is there any restriction any longer? I'm thinking there's maybe not.
The governor keeps changing things, but I don't know what the capacity's going to be.
Does the town clerk maybe have that?
I would think that... Or to help, check.
Yeah, especially since they just released that new update today.
Oh, they released another one today?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so that does...
Fully vaccinated people.
Yeah.
So, have to separate our town meetings?
Well, there is a caveat to that, new guidance.
Which is an interesting thing, because I think it... I don't think you can ask people if they've been vaccinated. I think it's against the HIPAA laws. But...
They can ask a child if you're vaccinated before they let them into a public school, so I don't know, understand what the difference would be.
That I don't know. But, oh, that's just my opinion. Or anything else on town meeting items? So, we'll have Kevin weigh in on these. Maybe he can email everybody. Okay. Consulting treasurer collector contract.
That was something I think, Kathy, you wanted on the agenda, so it becomes more transparent and public. This has been basically a black hole to us since the engagement of this person or company.
Correct. I'm just looking for... I'm just going to suck out... What's the paper? That's it. That's on it. That's always like the last thing. We had that and also a bill, right, Catherine? Is that correct?
Yeah, you asked me for a breakdown of what should be looked down, and that was in the...
Okay. Because my... The last time I asked about it at our meeting, I was told that we didn't have any bills. And now I'm looking for everything. Of course, you can't find it. Oh, yeah. This is the contract. I have that, but I have lost track of the bill. Oh, there it is. Nope, I found it. Okay, so, my understanding, have we paid this bill? Has this been through a warrant yet?
I think it might be this one.
Okay, because when I asked Kevin about that, he said... I don't know what he said. Did he say he knew or he didn't know? I don't think we... I know he didn't have an answer, so I wasn't sure.
I think this is the first bill.
Since January 24th, huh? Okay.
I don't even know that before.
So, this is one month bill, is what it's looking like. Am I understanding this correctly?
It doesn't even look like it's a full month.
Yeah, it's not a full month.
Yeah.
But the contract, I thought, was executed, yeah, January 24th. So, I don't know why it took till April. That would be my question.
Actually, for this... For the month's work, that's... That's not that much money.
Well, it's not that many hours, if I'm reading this right.
Well, if...
Can I just ask, is the quantity in hours on this bill? Is that what I'm understanding it to be? It says quantity and then rate. Right?
Got to be.
Yeah, something's...
Okay, so, travel time was 166 hours? Or is that 166 miles and 56 cents?
166 miles at 56 cents a mile.
Okay, yeah, that makes more sense. That's miles, I get it. And then this is hours, and this is miles.
So, it looks like she comes in here once a week.
That's correct.
But that's only been twice, two weeks. Or three... No, three times. I said, wait, one. I think it was myself. Oh, gee, had to leave early one day. I see that. Okay, I get that.
Yeah, but the travel... We only went halfway one time.
What?
We only went halfway. It's 166 each way until you get to the bottom, travel 83, so we only went halfway.
I don't know.
The only one.
Now, you're really going to confuse me. I don't know, but I'm just saying that I don't... We have a map, I guess, okay.
There are no invoices from this person prior to April 4th?
This is the only one I've received, and I don't know if it was...
When was she hired?
January 24th.
January 24th, 2021.
January 24th, yeah.
Got to be more...
I don't think so.
Well, this is the only one that hasn't been paid.
This is the only one we've received that I've seen. I went through the warrants the last time they're in here. I didn't see any of this. And I asked Kevin about it specifically, and I believe that there was not a bill at that time. I think this is our first bill.
Can't be.
And if it's not, I'd like to see the other bills.
There's two months of unaccounted for.
Well, do... Does the board want us to ask the accountant to see if there are any other bills? Do we want to do that? I'd be interested.
Well, we would ask... We could ask the accountant what's been paid.
Okay. So, do you need a vote of the board to ask the accountant for that information?
No, I don't think so. I don't see why we need a vote on that. It's requested of the board to see the... All the invoices.
Okay.
Anybody else? Dan? Bill?
No.
Jason?
No.
Okay. So, that's... Audit for fiscal year 2020. Anybody look over the paperwork from the auditors?
I did, because I left it in the house.
Oh, do you want to look at mine? I have a digital copy, so you're welcome.
Are we going to have the auditors come before us, as they usually do?
I believe they're outside.
Oh, they're here?
Up there in the hallway.
Yeah, I think they're out there.
Okay.
Do we want to do that? Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Hold... Jason?
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Could we just make a quick skip to the Garden Club to move that along?
Excellent suggestion. Anybody?
No objection.
No opposition.
I was going to say the same thing.
Diane, you're up.
Thank you.
Hi.
Diane, sorry about that delay. Thank you, thank you.
Are you here on the renewal or on the bulkhead replacement?
I'm here for three reasons.
Three.
The most important is the lease renewal.
Is the what?
So, the lease renewal.
Yep.
And I have a copy here. I think I sent it to Jason or... And I sent it to Catherine way back when.
It's like $1 a year, right?
It's $1 a year for five-year term, yes.
Yes.
It expired in December during the pandemic. Nobody did anything about it, and so we'd like... The Garden Club voted unanimously to ask for it to be continued.
Okay.
And so, we would respectfully ask you to keep that going, since the club has been taking very good care of the building for over 50 years, as it turns out.
So, I make a motion to renew the five-year contract of the Little Red Schoolhouse lease to the Garden Club for a five-year term at $1 per year.
I'll second that.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Here and none? All in favor? Opposed? Nobody?
Thank you.
All set on that?
So, how does this happen? Do you develop this and get it signed? You would do...
Yeah, I don't know whether she's...
You would do the signing?
We'll ask Catherine, when she comes back, if she has drawn up an agreement. Did you by any chance draw up the rental agreement for... To be signed for the Little Red Schoolhouse?
For the new one, no, but I can do that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, just get in touch with me when it's ready. Thank you. So, the second issue is that...
The bulkhead.
The bulkhead. When I mentioned this to Kevin, he said, "Don't worry, we'll take care of it." He asked Rennie to come up with a bid for it, and Rennie did. And then, my understanding was that Kevin is gone, and I don't know what you guys are doing with that. But the bulkhead can't wait for some other minor repairs. I'm hoping to write another CPA grant in the fall.
Okay.
Much smaller than the last one we did, which was in 2009, which was when the major part of the building was repaired to get it in shape. And we had a CPA grant of $50,000 at that point.
Okay.
The roof was done, the building, the siding was done, the painting was done, shored up the flooring, new windows. We spent every penny. But for some reason back then, 12, 13 years ago, the bulkhead was ignored. It probably was in decent, okay, shape at the time. It's falling down on its seams. It's rotted.
Okay.
There's carpenter ants in there, and it can only get worse. And...
Rennie's on the Zoom. Can... Let's see if he has anything to add to this. Rennie, can you hear us?
I can't hear you. Rennie, you there? Not yet.
Is he on mute?
Yeah, muted right now.
Rennie, can you hear us?
Yes.
We're discussing the bulkhead replacement. Do you have anything to add to that?
I did get a quote from a local contractor, due to the fact that everything, products, supplies, so on and so forth, has been through the roof. You know, I consulted with Kevin about it. He obviously had a thousand things on his plate. We never really made a decision. But it just was... No one pulled the trigger. I didn't know where the money was coming from. I didn't... I never got the go-ahead, basically.
This is the 1,500 that's in front of us?
1,500, yeah.
For the work out there, that doesn't seem to be a bad price.
It's not that bad. It's the... Like I said, the... Normally, I feel like a job like that would be around $1,000 to $1,200 bucks. It is a few hundred dollars, you know, elevated because of where the price of wood is and everything. We were going to look into some other avenues, but like I said, it didn't really get... It didn't really get any wings. I just... I think it was something that Kevin was talking about rolling into the capital, if there was some money left over from the carpet slash the roof projects and window projects that were going on. So, I just didn't know where the money was coming from, and I didn't have any direction to say, you know, give someone a go-ahead or have someone sign off on it.
It sounds like that needs to be another question that we have to ask Kevin. Go ahead, Kathy.
Well, I'm looking at our town repairs and maintenance budget. I'm assuming that's for our town buildings, and I believe we own the Little Red Schoolhouse. And it looks like it has $7,000 in it, repairs and maintenance. So, I would say that we could expend the money to make the repair. And of course, if for any reason something else breaks, we have the power since May 1 to do line item transfers within the town budget. So, it really doesn't require much of a consultant. We just need to decide if we're going to make the repair or not. And I would say, yes, we should make this repair. It's a town building.
Oh, it definitely needs to... Definitely needs to be done. Dan, go ahead.
So, I... Again, I'm looking at the repair and maintenance line item funded at $35,000. At the last variance report, had $6,992 left in it.
Don't you think it would be a benefit to find out if that's earmarked for something else?
Well, we could certainly ask the custodian, Steve here, and see about that, but I don't see why we don't vote to make the repair, because it needs to be made, and we're not going to watch this cave in. I don't think it requires a lot of consulting. It's a repair. We have a town building repair line item.
Okay, Dan?
What's it cost? $1,500 bucks?
Yeah, $1,500.
Small.
Well, you got the money. Is it just a matter of what pocket to take it out of eventually?
Yep, pretty much.
Bill?
No, it, it seems cheap enough. I mean, it doesn't, I don't see what this would require another $55 an hour consultant to make a $1,500 decision and, you know, it's so obvious that just make it happen.
Thank you.
Now, Jason, anything to add?
No, I just, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead with the repair as, uh, in this quote from Rennie for 1,550.
I'll second that.
Oh.
But I didn't see it. Why did I miss that? Oh, that's, I don't have it.
Um, can I, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I just want you all to know, uh, where the garden, Grove and Garden Club is at this moment in time. Um, we're below the poverty level, shall we say? Because there were no fundraisers last year, because the building kept costing us to the tune of $1,800 last year. But there was no money coming in. Uh, we lost members, um, and we didn't have any fundraisers. The next fundraiser is May 22. If you need plants, please come buy them at the Little Red Schoolhouse and tell your friends. But, um, it, it's, it's one of the reasons we can't even touch any repairs. Because we're holding on by a shoestring. Trying to get new members, trying to do some fundraisers. We have to make up some money from the loss of last year, like everybody else.
Right.
If the town in its pandemic relief money has a little bit to give the Garden Club because of the lack of ability to bring in some money, that would also be appreciated. I don't need you to discuss that now in front of me or, you know, whatever. But the, the Garden Club does a lot for this town. We do gardens. We've built, planted trees at Shanahan. We have nursing home visits. We, um, take, have a little kids' club. We've done native plant gardens. We have ongoing meetings with, um, the public to encourage plant, uh, the environment and planting. It's just a, a constant thing that most of these people, um, give to the town and to the town's benefit. So it seems to us that if there's any, you know, a couple of thousand dollars that can be somehow diverted to help the, the club get back on its feet, that would be appreciated. That's just my last little tidbit there. And I, um, thank you for your time and for getting the lease done. And hopefully for getting the bulkhead done, because that's really the emergency stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, we didn't vote yet.
Get a vote.
Oh, you need to vote.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in and talking to us. It's been a tough year.
My first time.
Uh.
I've been in this town 32 years.
Right, well, see you at the, see you at the plant sale. Thank you.
Letter from the, uh, letter from the assessor.
I didn't see a letter.
I think.
Looks like just a memo.
We're waiting on one.
Okay, that's what I was thinking too. Oh, you did get one.
You finally got it?
It was in my package.
Oh, wait a minute.
How far down?
The Board of Assessors voted on May 10th, 2021 to transfer from the overlay to the overlay surplus at the request of the Board of Selection. Amounts transferred from overlay accounts to overlay surplus are as follows, $50,000.
Thank you. Do we need to vote to accept this or do we just?
Yes, I believe so.
So I make a motion to accept the transfer to overlay surplus?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. This is good news, money.
Letter, uh, stipend of $250 a week to Anasha Burke, effective for, oh, while the, uh, let's, uh, hold off and we'll go to the, um, auditors.
The auditors in the suits.
Just come in the room.
You want to pay to sit down?
Sure, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Sit down.
Mind if I take the mask off while I go?
Go ahead. Be easy to hear you.
It is better, isn't it? Oh, my God, these masks.
Could you just introduce yourself?
Yes. I didn't know if you were, you were ready for us to get started or not, but.
The floor is yours.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. My name is Michael Nelligan. I'm a partner with Powers and Sullivan. My associate is Laura Stone. She's the audit supervisor, mainly responsible for the, uh, day-to-day fieldwork on the audit each year. So we're, um, here to just do a quick presentation, if you'd like, and to answer any questions you might have on the financials, on the management letter. And, um, I don't know if you have a pleasure on how you'd like to get started or?
No, that, uh, you're, you're going to go over both, uh, the report and the examination of, uh, basic financial statements and the management letter.
Yeah.
What you going to do first?
You have a preference?
How about the financial statements first?
Okay, sure. So I, this is an 85-page document. And I'm just gonna, I made some notes on my copy that I'm going to talk about. And obviously, if you have any questions or, you know, want to talk about anything else that I didn't highlight, please feel free to just interrupt me and we can take care of any questions you have. We did the audit, uh, again, this, this year remotely. We have a secure portal. All of the documentation was uploaded through the portal. And, um, it's, it's secure. Nothing really was, uh, sent by email or anything like that. So it's all being communicated to us through our portal. And so you don't have to worry about the data or anything being compromised. We, uh, do the audit typically in, in two phases. And I'm going to call it Phase 1 and Phase 3 because Phase 2 relates to the single audit that you're not required to have or haven't been required to have one. So Phase 1 we did during the second week of July last year. And Phase 3 we did the second week of December. We got the, uh, drafts of the financial statements to you and the management letter on January 28. And we issued the finals on March 31. They're dated March 23. But we waited a week or so for a management rep letter to come. So they're dated the 23rd, but they were issued on March 31. And, um, there were no new Gatsby statements this year, so pretty much the same report as last year, except for the numbers that changed. Everything went very smoothly. We had no issues, uh, full cooperation from everyone. We had no audit adjustments for your, from your ledgers to the financial statements. That we make a significant number of, uh, mod, of, um, entries related to GAAP accruals and converting your books from a budgetary basis to a, a, a GAAP basis, generally accepted accounting principles. And we do that through journal entries, but we didn't have to make any, any significant adjustments to your ledgers. So things that get recorded once a year, like capital assets, compensated absences, the pension and OPEB accruals, those kind of things are what I'm referring to on the modifications that we make to your budgetary ledgers. So you've got clean audit opinions. Our audit opinion is on page 1 and 2. And, um, it's on our letterhead and manually signed by me. Everything else in this 85-page document is yours. And that's the only thing really that we own. And again, the, the audit went very smoothly and we had no issues getting it done. And this was one of the first years, we, we were done earlier than this year than we've been done in the last, uh, four or five years anyway. And the remote auditing is, is a little scary on the face of it, but it's actually working out pretty efficiently. So we're able to work on the data that we get in. So rather than earmarking a, a particular week where we dedicate ourselves to the town, if something doesn't come during that week, then we're, we're, we don't get everything done. So the, the remote auditing gives us the opportunity to work on things as they come in. And it actually is making the process a little more efficient, uh, is what we saw during the first year. So I'm going to talk about a little bit of the numbers, and again, you can ask any questions you have. Your general fund was up $41,000 from the prior year. It ended with a balance of $3,145,000. And that's 18% of your general fund expenditures. Rating agencies look for that percentage to be anywhere from 7% to 15%. Included in the general fund balances as required by GAAP are your general stabilization fund of $1,443, your capital stabilization fund of $262,000. And also in that $3 million, we had to carve out, um, an assigned fund balance portion of that because last year you voted prior to the end of the year, $705,000 to be used out of free cash to balance 20's budget.
Right.
So that, um, money gets reserved as a pot of fund balance, so. But 18% general fund, fund balances compared to those expenditures is a pretty healthy fund balance. And you ought to be proud of that, especially the monies that you've got put away in stabilization and OPEB now too. You've got about $516,000 funded for your OPEB liability. So that's, that's some good progress there. Your, on a budgetary basis, your revenue for the year, and just, I'm talking about the general fund now, came in $237,000 lower than what you budgeted. And on a percentage-wise, it's, that's very small. It's almost insignificant. And it was amongst about six different categories. Your real estate taxes were, um, down just $37,000. Motor vehicles, and, and these numbers are the same that we're seeing in all of the towns that we've been auditing. Motor vehicle exercises are down. Intergovernmental and Department of Other revenues were down too. But overall, if you look at all the revenue that came into the town, you were up $222,000 over the year before. So you didn't really lose, uh, a lot of revenue, or any revenue really, because of the COVID thing. Certainly, building permits and, uh, some charges for services like that are, are down. But overall, your total revenue was up $222,000 over last year. And, um, your pension liability at the end of the year was 9.5 million. Your OPEB liability was 5.6 million. And both of those numbers are just up a, a couple of hundred thousand dollars over what they were the year before. You had no new long-term debt. Your total debt outstanding at the end of the year is 3.4 million for the governmental activities, 2.7 for the water fund, and 610,000 for the sewer fund. The light plant has no debt outstanding at the end of the year. You also have an $182,000 ban on anticipation note outstanding for police, fire, and some highway equipment. So that's been rolled over this past year too. And, um, and I'm just going to flip through, again, a couple of different notes on the statements. Our, again, our opinion is on page 1 and 2. The management's discussion and analysis follows that. And this gives you comparative information compares 2020 versus 2019. And like I said before, on page 7, at your, at the top level of your financial statements, the full accrual, your change in net position for the year was a negative 57,000 compared to a positive 780,000 a year before. And you, so your revenues in total were up 222,000. Your expenses in total were up just over, just under a million one. And those increases came from pension, OPEB, and mostly in employee benefits for the most part. That was about three quarters of the, uh, of the increases, just in those couple of categories. This gives comparatives on, on the governmental activities and then each one of the three enterprise funds. The, um, water.
I have a question.
Sure.
I mean, do you consider, I mean, the trend on the, of those benefits to increase at that standard rate or that's not part of your scope of your audit? I mean, if, if it continues at that rate, are we going to run deficits?
The, there's three components to the, to the, um, to the liabilities. The pension and OPEB amounts are determined by actuarial studies. And those are based on mortality factors, how much you've got funding in there because it affects your discount rates, and, um, return on investment on the assets that you have set aside for those benefits. Those are kind of the three, uh, things that cause the pension and OPEB numbers to go up or down.
Right.
And then you've got your regular employee benefits, your health insurance.
Ask you about the investments? I mean, the market was at an all-time high. Did that benefit the town at all? It, it looks like it went the other way.
You know, you're on a June 30 year-end.
Yeah.
And the June, if you look at the investments as of June 30, because of pandemic last year, they would, they, they had come back a little bit, but they just pretty much came back to where they were at the, at the end of the prior year. The, most of the other increase came in the second half of the year. So those numbers were down compared to let, the year before a little bit because of the timing of when the pandemic hit. So to answer your question, do we expect to see benefits continuing to increase? I would say yes. And, and that's based on historical trends. If you go back and look at how things have been trending over the last seven or eight years, I, I wouldn't be surprised to see those, um, in, increases continue. They might not be as, as dramatic as they.
So those numbers are derived by actuaries. So they, they, they ebb and flow. They, they fluctuate. So should we, is there a set amount that we should consider as to, uh, a minimum funding level so that that doesn't run away?
No, last year you put $200,000 in the OPEB fund. And you've got, um, a little over 5 million in there now, oh, 516,000, I think, in there now. Yes, 516,000.
516, yeah. You told us that. I wrote it down.
Yeah, the OPEB. The more you put it, the more you put in the OPEB, the higher your discount rate will be and the lower your liability. The more you put in, the more, that's kind of what you're looking for, is, is creating a critical mass in that fund where you've got, you know, four or $5 million ultimately in there. And that'll give you a higher discount rate and, and again, the liability will go down. But what we've been seeing is, yes, those liabilities are continuing to grow.
One, one more thing, and I want to take up any more time on this, uh, topic. Compared to other towns, where are we relative to, uh, funding? Are we, are we, you know, not funding enough or we're right where we need to be?
I'd say if you took a, like a snapshot of, of towns your size, you're probably right about in the middle of the mix. There's some of the larger towns have been able to put away more money. Some of the other, very large cities haven't put away hardly anything. So, um, it all depends on where you are on, like, a lot of the bigger cities and towns who have their own pension funds, they're struggling to fund those, the pension. And they're not putting a lot of money towards OPEB. But you're in a regional system, so you really don't have anything to say about how much goes into that. You just get a bill every year.
Yeah.
You do control the amount of money that you put into your OPEB plan. But I'd say you're getting to the point with $500,000 in there, you're, you're getting to the point where you're, you're starting to get, right around in the middle of where most towns, uh, your size are. And if you can continue to do that level of funding, you, you'll be surprised how quickly those assets will accumulate.
Thank you.
So where I left off, I was going to just quickly talk about the, um, the revenues in the three enterprise funds. The water fund, the revenue was 1.127 versus 1021 the year before, so pretty much very comparable. The revenues in the sewer fund were 548,000 compared to 536 the year before. And the revenues in the light plant were 5.7 million compared to 5.8 million. So very consistent in the, in the utilities. There's a, next couple of pages talk about your, um, fund-based statements. And I'm not going to get into a lot of detail on that because primarily we talk about the general fund and we've covered that. And then on page 12, we talk about, um, capital asset and debt administration. And you, you spent $614,000 on new capital assets, mainly relating to infrastructure-type purchases, road resurfacing and that type of stuff. And the light plant spent about $290,000 on various things for the light plant. The water and sewer didn't add any fixed asset additions. And I touched on your debt. You, you didn't have, um, you haven't, you haven't had any new debt in the last few years, except that little ban. And you've been making all the scheduled payments on your debt, so you're in good shape there. So I'm just going to quickly flip through a couple of the pages that I noted. We talked about the, the general fund balances on page 18. There's two reconciliation pages on page 19 and 21 that kind of explain what the differences are in the financial statements between the fund-based statements and the full accrual statements at the front. If you want, um, some homework to do, those are the pages that I would focus on and help you understand these financial statements a little better. What, what the fund-based statements are and what the full accrual are. All those differences are, are detailed out on those pages on 8, on 19 and 21. And one is the, basically the balance sheet differences, and the other one is the income statement differences. So you can see how they, how those statements flow. I'll talk, just quickly, I wanted to touch, you got allocated on the CARES Act about $603,000 in the first round. What you used as of last June was, you brought in about, about 83,000 and you spent 19,000 of that and there's unearned revenue of 63,000. So as of June 30 last year, you hadn't dipped into the, the CARES Act monies too significantly at that point. And I, I don't know where you are right now with those funds, but it, it may cause you to have a single audit next year. If you spend more than $750,000 in, um, federal expenditures, you, you'll have to have a single audit done. And it's not, it's not a big deal. If you do need to have one done, we'll do it. There's no extra charge for it. And we're, we're very familiar with these funds, so it, it won't be a problem if we have to do it. Depending on when, if you spend all the money that you have available to you in FY '21, you most. likely you will need a single audit. But if you do, we'll get it done, and it won't be a problem.
So you want to know if we spend, how, what's our cap? This is for fiscal '21, or is this an accumulation of everything?
What you, it's by year.
By year.
Anytime you spend over 750 in one year, you are subject to the Uniform Guidance Single Audit.
Okay, and then if we spend under that, we don't do anything?
Right. I mean, you always spend 300 or 400,000 in federal expenditures.
Oh, okay, so the CARES Act is going to add to what we always spend.
Yes.
I understand.
That's what will push you over the 750. It may push you over the 750 if you spend it all in one year.
Yeah, I understand, it could.
Yeah. Don't be afraid of that, though. Spend the money before it goes away, because it's going to go away if you don't spend it. And the single audit is, it sounds like a scary thing, but we do them all the time, and it's nothing to be worried about. Especially, the CARES Act is, those funds can be spent on anything related to CARES Act. There's a list of things you can't spend it on, but most likely you won't run into those things. Like, you can't fund pension with it, things like that.
No, but we have been spending it on, we had extra staffing issues, and we had things for the school, the Bagnon Elementary School that we provided.
Yes, yeah.
And we provided air cleaners. We had, what, how much money, Catherine, do you think on the town hall, along with the duck cleaning and all? There was over $10,000 there alone, so.
Yeah.
As possible.
So if you need to do it, we'll look at the expenditures, just verify that you didn't spend anything on things that are specifically excluded.
No, we were pretty careful, I think.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. And it won't be a problem.
Thank you.
So the OPEB trust fund is broken out on page 25. That's where that is, and it shows that you have $516,000 in there at the end of the year.
May I ask, how did we get to 516? I mean, we've put away $89,000.
Well, I just, I just looked at the statements from 2008.
Have we done it for that many years?
No. And you only had 182.
Balance in there.
Oh, there was already money in there?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You put 200 in fiscal year '20, you put, I forget what you put in the year before, but it was something up around that. Because you only had 182 in there back two years ago. So in the last two, you've put in another, another 300-plus interest. So this past.
Oh, that's good, okay, so that's a good thing.
This past year, you got $29,000 of interest income line on that money, so.
Really? That's good. Our finance board will like that.
So if you put another 200 in in FY21, and earn another 40 or 50,000 in interest, you'll be at, you know, you'll be up close to 800,000 by the end. And if you do that every year, it really builds up pretty quickly, so.
So you feel like 200,000 a year is what we should be trying to put in, maybe, or?
I can't tell you what you should put in, because you have to be able to afford what you put in. So that's part of your budgetary process, but.
Yes, I know, thank you.
There really isn't any benchmark. Some people are putting in a percentage of free cash.
Okay.
You know, I've got clients that are putting in 10% of free cash, or 5% of free cash. Some are aggressively funding it to get it fully funded. But again, it all kind of depends on where you are with the rest of your budget, and how much money you've got available.
Correct. Thank you.
So like I said at the beginning, there were no new Gatsby statements, so the notes to your financial statements are all pretty much the same as they were the past few years, the exception of the numbers being updated, obviously. There's detailed information on your pension and OPEB funding, and your discount rates, and all of that information. It's on, it's on page 50, and it runs through page 61. So there's 11 pages of notes on just your pension and OPEB.
Okay.
And that's the primary reason that this report has gotten to be 85 pages long. It used to be only like 37 or 38, now it's 85. Where did all that income from? I don't know, but.
I don't know.
And then at the back of the report, there's a, some required supplementary information. So on page 67 is a budget-to-actual schedule. I already talked about this a little bit on the revenue and expenditures totals for the year. And then there are 10-year schedules being developed on pension and OPEB funding and liabilities. And then at the very end, we give you a report on internal control of a financial reporting and compliance. And this is, because we do your audit in accordance with Yellow Book standards, so we do all of our audits as governmental auditors. So whether you need a single audit or not, we still do the audit, use audit programs that are designed to meet the requirements of government entities and so forth. So we're doing what they call a Yellow Book audit. And we're required to give you this opinion at the end of that, telling you that, basically, that we didn't find any instances of internal control or financial reporting matters that we found troublesome. So this report, again, is another clean opinion on the internal control of a financial reporting. So that's the financial statements. And I can move right into the management letter, or take any questions you have on the financials. We can come back and forth. So if you want me to keep going, I'll be happy to go right into the management letter.
Sure, go to the management letter. Unless anybody got questions on the financial statements. Jason?
No, I'm good.
Kathy?
No, I'm very good. It's a great report. I like it.
Okay, so the management letter, we've been issuing a management letter every year for quite a while. We have two new comments. One is on bank reconciliations, and the other is on tax title. And then we have four continuing matters that we've been recommending for a few years, and these haven't been addressed, or they're in some sort of process of being addressed. And I'll just quickly go through these, and then come back to the bank reconciliation and the tax title matters. The fraud risk assessment is, we've talked about this the last few times we've met, we recommend to all of our clients that you do an internal control fraud risk assessment, and go around to the departments and have them identify any areas where they're taking in cash, or they might be exposure to any risk associated with payroll liabilities or handling of cash. We recommend that the department heads do this on their own, come up with a list of areas that they feel might be susceptible to fraud or loss, or whatever. And then what it is that they do to monitor those things. And then Denise was starting to work on this process, I believe, and getting the department heads to give her a quick, like, a one-page report each year on what they're doing in their department to mitigate those risks. So that's kind of what that comment is all about. You can hire people from the outside to do that for you, or you can do it yourself internally. And it doesn't matter to us which way you go, but I personally think it's better off if you did it yourself, because you're getting everybody engaged in that process. The next comment was on internal procedure manuals, and with some of the recent turnover that you've had, you're going to appreciate this comment maybe a little more now, because you need those manuals when you hire new people. And then documentation of internal controls. This is a new standard that came out. Basically, governments are now recommending, especially for the federal spending, when the Uniform Guidance came out, they strongly recommend that all recipients of federal grants adopt COSO standards. C-O-S-O, those are sort of the benchmark for internal control reporting. So we put a little comment in recommending that you update that, those comments. And we have templates that we could provide you with. I think we probably already have given those to Denise at one point or another. And it's mainly just writing a little quick internal control memo over how you account for your federal grants. And not so much applicable for you folks, but when you, when you have a, when you're running the town, I mean, the school system within the town, that's where most of the federal grants go, is to the school system. So it's more important that the cities and towns that have a school system do it. And we would recommend that the school system do it itself, wherever that's applicable. And then the fourth one on the continuing matters is just an informational comment about cybersecurity, and it's just really to raise awareness of that potential risk for everybody that's out there. So our new comments, and the first one is the bank reconciliations. And I call this a new comment, but it's really not a new comment, because we've, we've had comments, material weaknesses about cash reconciliations from 2007 until 2012 or so, we had, no, until 2015, right before Denise came here, maybe even '17, I think it was, we had material weaknesses over cash reconciliations. And when Denise came on board, we took the comment out because she had committed to working on them. She got some updated software on Vadar side, and they were starting to do more in-depth reconciliations, and we pulled the comment out. This past year, with your new interim finance director, he wasn't satisfied that those reconciliations had got to the point where he was comfortable, so he asked us to put the comment back in. And so it is really two accounts that aren't being fully reconciled. And one is the Century Bank online collection account. It's a relatively new account, and it's about maybe two years old, and it hasn't been fully reconciled, but it's never been off by as much as it has this past June 30. And I just went in and I looked at the cash book for every single month, and this account has never been out of balance by more than $39,000 for every month of the year, except for June. Something happened in June, and it put it out of balance by $148,000. And we haven't been able to, nobody could tell us what the difference is. But so I went back and I looked at the same reconciliation that happened every single month during the year, and it was as low as $5,800 some months, and it was high as $148 at the end of the year. Something quirky happened in June, and nobody could tell us what it is. So I assume it's worked itself out by now, but there's some timing difference that occurred in June. I'm not saying that the money's missing or anything. In this case, the treasurer's balance is higher than the bank balance. So something didn't get transferred properly. And I can't tell you what it is, but that's what the variance was at the end of the month, at the end of June. And on the vendor account with Eastern Bank, you have a reconciling item of about $280,000. It just so happens that it's the same amount as the outstanding checklist.
What?
And the outstanding checklist is not something that gets effectively managed, so I'm not sure that the outstanding checklist is what's wrong, or whether or not. So basically, because of timing differences of the warrants and how the light plant interacts with that, there's never been a really a good system of identifying what the outstanding checks are at any one point in time, and what the warrants, how they affect the cash reconciliations. And that's what's causing that account to be out of balance. And I think something's wrong either with the outstanding checklist or the timing of how the warrants are being posted there. I don't really think it's a, it's a major issue. I don't think you're missing any money or anything. At least, I haven't really identified it that way. But there is something to do with the timing difference of how those outstanding checks and the warrants are being posted against that reconciliation. And Denise started to get it figured out, but never got a real system in place to just allow somebody without a lot of experience to be able to handle that problem. So that's kind of how that's crept up. And again, I don't think, I don't think it's a major issue. I think a new treasurer would be able to figure it out without too much trouble, especially with the Vadar module that they bought to help reconcile the cash. So it's just a matter of getting somebody on board in that position and getting those reconciliations done on a timely basis.
Right.
And identifying all of the pieces that need to go in and out of it. The accounts are, the bank accounts themselves are reconciled on the treasury side. They're just not reconciled to the general ledger. So I don't want to leave you thinking that they're not reconciling the bank statements, because they are. It's just that second step where you reconcile the treasurer's balances to the accountant's balances on the general ledger. And that's generally where the timing differences are, and you need to have people working together and identifying all of those timing differences so that they don't create variances for the auditors to see at the end of the year, basically. So I'm not, you know, raising a red flag over it or anything. I don't think it's a huge issue, it's just, I think it's just timing differences. Reconciliations are done basically the same way every month, and they all tie out to the bank, just between the ledger and the treasurer, so.
Can I ask you a question on the, the Century Bank and the vendor account at Eastern Bank? Do both of those include electric company?
The vendor one would. I don't think the, well, I'm not sure whether the online payments are coming for the light plant are coming through that Century Bank account or not. I don't know if they, they may have their own system over there. We don't audit the light plant. Another auditor does that, and we rely on their statements, so I'm not intimate, familiar with what happens over at the light plant.
Okay.
I think they probably use a different system, because that Century Bank account is relatively new.
All right, Dan? Did you state that the general ledger balance is higher?
The, the.
In the Century Bank account?
In the Century one, yes.
$148,000.
Yeah.
So the assets overstated. So is that just that they're not posting timely? I mean, has that been identified as to the.
It may have been identified by now.
Process the disparments?
The variance may have been identified by now, but I, we couldn't get anybody to tell us what it was as of June, as of June 30.
And so is it fair to say that your audited financial statements use unreconciled balances? And that they were, in your opinion, the variances were immaterial, and you passed on them?
Yeah, we're not going to hold up the financial statements over, you know, $148,000. We do put it in the management letter and note it to you. I don't think the money is missing anywhere, I just think it's, it's part of that timing process. Because again, like, if you look, if you look down at the, how the variance was recorded every single month, 14,000, 37,000, 39, 6,300, 37, 39,000, 4,600, 26,000, 10,000, 5,800, 32,000, and then all of a sudden it jumped up in June to 148.
So if a few months later it cycles through, it should shrink back down to the variance of 10.
I would imagine so, yeah.
Within, within your scope of your audit, do you have a level of materiality?
Yes.
Could you tell us what that was?
The materiality is funny, because in a government's financial statements, materiality is determined at the opinion unit level. So every single column in all of these financial statements has a different materiality level.
All right. Well, that would make sense. I mean, what's material to payroll may not apply towards paper clips.
So we actually, I would say, do you have any idea what the materiality level is? Probably, I mean, I'd be guessing, but I'd say it's probably 150,000.
In terms of cash? So it's at the maximum, but just under the threshold of materiality. So if the, if cash was off, say, 500,000, would you pump the brakes on that?
Most likely.
Depends on the fund, too, the individual fund.
Yeah, but it would, we would report it to you. Whether we'd make it, make you make an adjustment to it is another thing. Because most likely, it's timing. So whatever is out there is going to fix itself through the normal course. So we wouldn't force you to make a posted journal entry that we didn't understand. We would just identify it, and that's why it was reported as material weaknesses in the past, because it wasn't getting fixed through the normal cycle, and nobody was addressing it. So if you've got people that are going to fix it and work on it and figure it out, then typically, we wouldn't force an adjustment to the financials on you.
Can I ask a question?
And if it wasn't fixed, I mean, you'd force to have an adverse opinion or an exception?
If it was way above materiality, yes.
Okay.
We'd insist that something happened. Either you hire somebody to figure it out, and we hold up the financial statements, or we'd, I hate the book entries that aren't explainable. I mean, it just makes the problem worse, I think. Because now you've got this thing that you put on the books, that you don't know what that is either.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you. All right, Kathy?
Yes, two thoughts, really, actually, just because you went back about what we report. You were, you were with us for a long time, right, as an audit firm?
I've been doing this audit since 2002.
So you and I both know where this town came from.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we were in some deep waters, and that we've come a long way. And, you know, I was really pleased to see the progress on the OPEB liability and all of the clean reports and all. And I was just kind of wondering, the timing thing, would that at all impact the certification of our free cash, or is this just total bookkeeping stuff?
It's just bookkeeping. Doesn't have anything to do with free cash.
That was my only real question. I know the finance. I know the finance committee was a little concerned about why the free cash came in a little bit lower certification wise last year as compared to other years. And I wasn't sure if this could be part of, part of that, but it sounds like we just didn't get a lot of money. But, or we spent a lot of money and didn't have a lot of access.
This wouldn't affect free cash at all.
Yeah, no, I know where, yes. I didn't think this way, but I wanted to check. But otherwise, you've noted that our reserves are very healthy for a town of our size.
Yeah.
And this year, we don't have as large a reserve of free cash, but given our other reserves, do you think that our, how bond ratings would be viewed, would be viewed well by a company if we did have to go out to bond?
I don't, I don't think the rating agencies would have any issues with your financial statements the way they look right now.
They look good. Okay, good. That's good to know. Because that concern has been raised that if we spend any part of the free cash we have, that our bond rating might suffer. And I thought, geez, we have, what do we have in stabilization? We have a lot, right? Is it 1.4 million or?
You have-
1.2 million?
Yeah, you have, no, yeah.
1.4 I have, 1.4 million?
You have 1,705 in total. You've got 1,443 in the regular stabilization fund, and this is as of last June. And you've got, you had 262,000 in the capital stabilization.
Capital, yeah, good.
So 1,705. It's, that's a pretty good stabilization fund.
Right, more than 10% of our operating budget.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, great. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I've got a few things. If you were to grade the company, the company, the town's finances on a grade from A to F, what would the grade be?
Probably a B.
A B.
And that's a comparative one that I would, you know, if I was comparing you to a Wellesley or something like that, you know? I think Groveland's a great town. I mean, I live in Rowley and when I try to get on 95 in the morning and I see all those cars coming the other way, I know there's, everybody wants to live over here. And, you know, that's, that's a great benefit because your real estate is the main source of your revenue. And when you've got a good, healthy real estate market, you know, you're going to, you're going to be fine. It's just then a matter of sorting out where you're going to spend the money and what services you're going to provide and so forth. But, you know, we have communities out in the middle of the state that have a completely different outlook on things that, you know, the real estate market statewide is increasing, but for the last 10 years or so, it's recovered around here, but it hasn't recovered much out in Springfield and middle of the state at all. So Springfield is finally starting to see a comeback a little bit, but.
Well, we've got a new school here going up, so I imagine that's a big attraction as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, I guess my next question is, and I don't, I know you don't have a crystal ball, so I'm not going to ask you to predict the future in any kind of accuracy. But over the last several months, I've been told by certain individuals that we're headed toward doom and gloom. We're going to be, we're close to receivership here. Is there any validity in that statement that I'm just making right now?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we're in pretty good health?
Yeah.
You don't see the, you don't see DOR coming in here anytime and taking this over, do you?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't know why they would even, unless they've, you know, something that I don't know.
I don't either. That's, I've been led to believe that in the last several months, so I just wanted to make sure that that was not actually factual. And I think you've straightened that out for me, so I appreciate it. I have no further questions.
I mean, that's really only going to happen if you can't balance your budget, you know? I mean, that's, that's when the receivership comes in. If you can balance your budget and provide the same level of services that people are used to, that's, that's going to be enough for the DOR. They're not going to have any issues with that.
Thanks for making. Jason, you got anything to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. I think you're all set on the bank reconciliations, the tax title?
Yeah, so the other comment that we had, and again, this is very similar to the bank reconciliation comment, that the new interim treasurer wasn't really happy with the way that the tax title accounts have been managed. And in a lot of communities, that this is, you know, somewhat of a political issue, that treasurer's job is to take anybody's account that doesn't pay and put it in tax title. Where it goes from there is up to the assessors and the collector and, but, you know, the next step is foreclosure and the next step after that is selling those properties off. So you don't lose anything when you're in tax title. You still charge taxes and you charge interest on top of that. So it's not really a bad place for the town to be in is to have monies in tax title. You're better off having tax title than uncollectible accounts that nobody's paying any attention to. So the comment is basically to manage your tax title. So if you need money, there's firms out there that will look at those balances and buy them from you if you wanted to sell them. You could foreclose on them and sell them yourselves. You can work out arrangements with those folks and convince them that, you know, maybe paying your taxes is better than accumulating a 14% interest charge on those monies every month, every year. There's a lot of things that can be done. And again, you need to have a good, steady treasury function in order to be managing this process. And it's not something that you solve, you know, like right away. This is a negotiation between the people that owe you the money and, you know, the properties and what you ultimately want to have happen to those. So it's, it's not unusual to have accounts sit in tax title for a long time. But what we're recommending is that you manage that process so that everybody, the assessors, the collectors, the treasury function, and you folks on the select board are all in agreement on how we're managing our tax title accounts. And that's really all that is. And if you, I went back and looked at what the last six years, where a tax title was 112,000 back in 2015, and it's grown to 652,000 at the end of 2020. And it's crept up gradually over the last six years. But again, I don't, I don't see a tax title as being a bad thing in and of itself because you could easily just have that same amount of money sitting in the over 120-day category in receivables and you're not charging interest on it. So move it into tax title is the first best step to take, and that you've done. Now, where we go from here with these, and it's not that many properties. I looked at the list. It's about 30 different properties that are in tax title right now. And they're not all the same. Some of them are businesses, some of them are private homes, some of them are farms, or, you know, the pieces of farms that get taxed. So it's, it's a lot of different types of things. But it's not, it's not 500 properties, it's about 30. So it should be manageable for you to look at.
Jason, any questions?
No.
Kathy?
Well, not really. I mean, I looked at the list too, and I know that like one-third of it is tied up with the Valley Screw, which is our federal fund cleanup site, that prior selectman, Michael Wood, spent quite a bit of time trying to speak with the EPA and it's just a lot of red tape. It's, they just say, well, if you take control of this property, then you're liable for it.
Right.
But then if you don't take control of this property, the owner's not going to pay anything. And some kind of deal was made with the owner where they walked away.
So someday that property is going to transfer and you have a good position with your tax title. So you're getting, you're continuing to build them, you're continuing to get interest on that money, and eventually something is going to happen and you most likely will get paid.
Have you seen it?
No, I'm not familiar.
Nothing good.
It's pretty horrible. The building is like caving in. The roof is coming down. It's the neighborhood eyesore over where I live and it's a very sad statement for, you know, a very bad thing that happened in this town about, what, the 1980s? Was it 1980 yet or 1970s? It was before we got here, the federal fund.
Yeah, it's been going on a while.
Yeah, they shut down the swimming pond over there and, and the well. And, and that company was responsible for the, for the pollution.
Dan, you got a question?
Yeah, as far as the collecting the taxes, I wanted to ask you a question, Selectman Cassellis. I mean, do you know if that property's clean now? Does anybody know the status?
From what Selectman Wood reported to us after his meetings, and Selectman Dunn also went to a meeting, what I recall him saying is that our wells are clean and they have, if you go to the site on Washington Street, you'll see that down by the mill pond, there's still test wells that they're monitoring at. But they said to us, that building, if we take that building down and we find anything underneath the surface of where the building is, they're not so sure. And then we would be responsible for that, so.
Only if we took title.
Right.
Right, right. So they, they won't, they won't say, what I understood is they will not say, one way or the other, that the footprint of that building, they will not say, one way or the other, what is underneath that footprint.
Can I ask a question? You know, it seems like we wouldn't want to take title to a property that would be contaminated or potentially, the risk is great. It's cradle-to-grave liability, from what I know. Have you seen anything in your experience where a town went into an involuntary bankruptcy situation to get that property over to a trustee in the U.S. Bankruptcy Court so that they could sell that property and try to, try to collect the taxes? Do you have any experience?
I don't have any specific experience with that, but I'm sure it happens all the time.
Sure it happens all the time. So that would, that might be a potential avenue where we could pursue the taxes without taking title to that and all the can of worms that would go with that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, anything to add?
No, not at this time.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Or comment, really. I kind of have to disagree with you a little bit about having the money in the tax title like it is, is, we don't lose. Well, I think we do, at some point. When the property value is less than the taxes that erode on the property, if we go all the way to where we end up owning it and turn around and sell it, if you're selling it for less than what the taxes are, you're losing money.
I totally agree with you. But there's a period of time where you can negotiate that and you're going to, you're going to be okay for a while. And you're right, though, but if it goes out over 20 years or so, you're going to end up on the short end of the stick if you have to get that property yourselves. You're right. I agree with you.
Dan, go ahead.
That's a great point. I mean, if it gets to the point where the tax title exceeds the value of the property, it's underwater, so we should keep an eye on where that dial's moving so that whatever legal remedies there are are, you know, pursued prior to that happening.
Right.
So, you know, appreciate you bringing that up. I don't know how close we are on any of those properties, but it should be looked at by finance director or someone else within the town, or the selectman.
We had, we had discussed a, an idea of having the town planner, Rebecca, who's familiar with, some of these parcels are slivers from developments that were left behind by the developer. I mean, you can see, I can, I recognize some of the old developments. And we could have her go through the list and she would be able to check whether there's any value to that property to the town at this point where property values are high. It might be worth it looking into.
That raises another issue. If we were to take those properties in foreclosure, would that affect our town, our state funding? I mean, is there a benefit to taking those off the tax rolls? Do we get any credit for open space or anything else, you know? Does that get us some revenue points with local aid?
No.
Doesn't, so it's a lose.
Yeah, if you're going to go into foreclosure on them, your strategy should be to sell those properties off rather than-
And that's the reason to look at them, to make sure that you're not trying to go after something that's not worth it. We don't want to expend taxpayer dollars on a, on a lost cause.
Yeah, I mean, what we do see sometimes is where town becomes in possession of a property and instead of building a new facility or doing something, they multi, change the purpose of that and use it for an administrative building or a library, something, you know, I mean, we've seen that happen a lot of times where properties are taken and, and used for something in the town itself, you know? If you need, if you need additional space or another building or something like that. But, I mean, obviously it has to be a perfect situation for everybody, but.
Right. Now, there's been such discussion of the Valley Screw property and some use as a senior center, community center, something like that, but I think we're still-
I think the main point of our comment is to make you all aware of what's in there and what, you know, to get a dialogue going about how you want to resolve those things and how, what your posture is with regards to them. You know, whether you want to move it down the road and move it into foreclosure or if you're happy leaving it where it is in tax title.
Would you, would you recommend the next step, sending out letters to-
I believe we do that.
People on the list?
If you think it's going to help collect the money, yeah.
I think historically, if you're going to start publishing in the newspaper, historically people start paying up.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's really the first step in what you would do before moving to foreclosure is to advertise those properties and see if that gets people motivated to pay. That's-
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Are we all, we all set?
Yes.
Well, just one more thing.
No.
When you were reading about the months on the Century Bank balances, we, I didn't see that in here.
It's not. I got that from the treasurer's cash book.
Okay.
The treasurer has a spreadsheet where they reconcile all the bank statements. It's all on one big Excel spreadsheet and all the accounts are listed in their own column. And there's receipts and dispersments and other adjustments on every single one. And it's, it's a very nice schedule, actually. And it'll show you the reconciliation for every month from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And it's done for every single account.
Okay.
So that's something the treasurer could provide you with if you wanted to see it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay. It's our pleasure, actually.
Is this your bodyguard here?
Yes. Laura is-
You're afraid to say no.
That's right.
No, Laura takes care of a lot of our, she does a lot of work for us and-
Well, thank the both of you for coming in.
You're very welcome. Nice to see everybody.
Thank you for the explanation. I always learn something new that I didn't understand, so thank you.
Next order of business, stipend of $250 a week to Nasha Burke, effective 4/29/21, for duties of the Council on Aging Director until the position is filled.
Right.
We have a letter on that from the former Council on Aging Director.
Correct. And?
What's your wishes on this?
I was just going to look. I'm assuming we have the available funding in the salary?
No.
No?
We do not.
Oh, okay, let me just look down.
There's a comment from them.
That's what I was going to say.
Some of it's going to come from there and some of it is proposed to come from the transportation line item.
Okay, let me just try to get to it. We're in this hearing support.
Why isn't there money in the salary account for the director if she has retired?
I believe she's continued to get paid through the end of the fiscal year because she has the, just paid time off. PTO coming to her.
Okay, is she the one that's at 58-555? Is that her line item?
Lynn?
What's, what's the salary line item? Do we know? I'm looking at director salary, program coordinator outreach, this is their lines, yeah, this is her line.
Yes.
So I see 58-555 and then I see on this variance, which is what, March variance? It's showing a balance of 17-611. Now, I don't know if there's a more recent report than this one. This is March 2021. It's more in May, so maybe an update. But still, 17, well, I don't know how much goes a month. I wouldn't want to misspeak out of turn. 17-611. So you want to do two, they want 250 for all of May and all of June, and then the new year kicks in, right? 250. Eight weeks. Not that much. So nine weeks. You're only talking 2,025 if you do like nine weeks of it. That's, that's not a huge amount of money to close out the fiscal year. We don't have that in the salary? No?
No, not that I, not the, um, not the email I got from Ellen today.
Oh, okay, Ellen's email would be most current. So she's saying it's not there?
She's saying that the, uh, nope, not in that line item.
Well, we, if we...
That it'll run over before the year end.
And where is she proposing that we might have additional funding, that we could move into that?
Uh, let's see.
She's got the revolving account.
The revolving account?
Yes, she told me earlier, sir.
What? I don't, we can't move money in a revolving account.
Yeah.
We're allowed to move on these line items here with a joint vote of the Board of Selectmen and the Financial Board, like, you can move. There's money in the vehicle maintenance account, but then the van keeps breaking down, so...
It's the van expense line is where it's...
Oh, that's where she's saying, the man van expense line, the $5,000?
Yeah.
That has 38-75 left in it? (laughing).
I'll call you again. I think the idea that's not gonna be anticipated to be spent before the end of the year.
I'm sorry, I'm like, feel like I do something wrong.
I'm not really good.
Is it better?
I'm not wondering. I heard it's been sounding pretty good.
Okay, thanks. So, I see 3,875 there. So that's, I said how much for the, for the next nine weeks, counting if you call it like nine weeks, 2,250 was all that would cost. Then, of course, you have the whole salary available for the next year until we fill that position. That's the proposal?
That's the idea.
That, that doesn't seem unreasonable, because we won't have a director until we hire one. You're on the committee that's hiring, right? Ed and you and Jason?
Yeah, yes. In fact, Jason will cover that under the Hiring Committee.
Well, what do you both think about this proposal to, to at least do some kind of a patch to get us through?
Well, my opinion, if she's doing the work, she should be compensated in some way. We've, we've compensated everybody else for taking on additional responsibilities and she's no different than anybody else. Jason?
Yeah, I agree. I agree. And Ellen mentioned not to move it from the revolving account, but to charge the revolving account.
I'm not sure we, that's what I mean, I don't know, revolving accounts are voted at town meeting, or is that what we're talking about?
Which revolving account would that come from?
That's what I'm trying to say, I don't remember a Council on Aging revolving account.
You can't take it from the, the Pines, you can't take it from Grovan Day, you can't take it from Bagno Summer School, so...
Oh, I mentioned that Council on Aging has one, don't they?
No, no, not that I'm aware of, not off the top of my head. It would be on the annual town meeting warrant if we did. That's why I'm, I'm a little confused, but...
There is no revolving account that I know is attached to the Council on Aging.
The COA has one. From Ellen, the COA has a revolving account.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure if we're mixing and mingling language here, because we re-up the revolving accounts that we vote for at the annual town meeting. And I have not seen that Council on Aging revolving account reported on at any annual town meeting that I can remember right now. So, um, I mean, can we just move money from the expense line to the salary line and do it that way? Can we, we can transfer money, who is the person that we're trying to give the stipend to? What position is that person in?
She, she...
Our program coordinator?
She's going to assume Lynn Stanton's opposition.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, we would, we could transfer into our salary the money for this, for the stipend, right? By vote, our vote in conjunction with the Financial Board. And after May 1st, we're allowed to vote, transfer within line items, I thought, within the voted budget. The only thing we can't touch is school assessments, because we've done that other years, at the end of the year. We've done that other years at the end of the year, at the end of June. So did you find a revolving account?
Yeah.
Oh.
How much is in it?
Oh, 15,000. Well, what do you know? Okay. Eight revolving, but wait there...
I'm not sure what the use is, though.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they're established by bylaws. I, I don't know that you can just charge any old thing to a revolving account that's not been already identified as... All of those revolving accounts deliver reports to the town meeting, like VZ Park revolving...
Where do we get the information on what it's used for?
I don't know.
Council on Aging.
Well, they should have a report at the end of last year's annual town meeting. Let me just see if it's there.
Is that the accountant on there?
No, she hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Two, two, two.
Mr. Chair.
Dan, go ahead.
Here's our, here's our annual town from last...
Can we reconcile this with Finance Committee prior to town meeting?
Yes, they've, we've...
Ellen said it's a 53 and a half revolving fund like the others.
I know, but...
Does that help?
No. But thank you.
We need the report anyways, don't we?
I think so.
So I don't think we can do this.
Well... There's money right now in her salary, in this person's salary, to give her an extra 250, and the problem will be that her salary will run out if we don't replenish it, correct?
It will run over.
No, well, yeah, it will either run out or run over, one of the two. So we would have to replenish it prior to the end of June. So we could vote the stipend if she is starting her duties already, right?
We need a funding source.
This, her own salary. You would just pay her the additional money and now we would work on the transfer into her salary of the additional money for the rest of this year.
So you propose over, overfunding her temporarily? Is that what you're saying? Overbudgeting it?
Well, essentially, you would be if you just didn't do anything, yes. But if you were planning to schedule to do the line item transfers, I mean, I guess I'm wondering what any reasonable person would do, and I think that the position is empty, the work must be done. We've given stipends to other employees this year to take on additional work. It sounds like this person is already taking it on, and we, we should pay them.
And you're only talking another, probably another six weeks before the...
Well, it's only like 2,000, you know, what I said, 2,250 if you count nine weeks that, the nine weeks that, that our accountant described. It's not a lot of money, but it seems, I wish we'd heard about this a month ago and done it then, but nevertheless, I, we just got the letter now asking for this.
Dan, go ahead.
So if we were to wait for town meeting and reconcile this with the Finance Committee, I mean, could we fund it retroactive for these next two weeks? I mean, I don't want to short somebody if they're, you know, earned something. I don't want to short anyone, but I mean, could we just handle it then? I mean, I just, I'd rather, that would be my preference to just get there, procedurally get the input of Finance Committee, we need it anyways. But again, if we're gonna lose the two weeks, it's the way we can retroactively just pay them back if we vote at that point in time. But, you know, I don't want, I don't want to cheat somebody out of something they earned.
Right, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
But, but I don't know that we can unilaterally make that decision. I don't know that the best course is to spend over budget. And effectively, I think technically, I don't know that it's, you know, the end of the world here, you know, but if we overbudgeted it, but that's... We're just gonna wait two weeks and we'll get it paid.
Well, what about if we just make a vote of support for this and say that we're gonna vote to approve it contingent on the Financial Board's approval of a transfer to fund it?
I'd go along with that. We could give a vote of approval on it and...
I, I would like to support this, you know, at this point in time.
You know, contingent upon the Finance Committee's input.
Approval of, of a line item transfer. Right, and then we could give Ellen time to decide where we should transfer from.
You want to make a motion to that effect?
Sure. So the motion would be to vote in support and approve the stipend of 250 per week to Nisha Burke, effective 4/29/21 for the duties of COA Director until the position is filled contingent on a vote of support and approval from the Financial Board to support a line item transfer to fund it.
I'll second that.
That's ridiculously long.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Thanks.
Next, a one-day liquor license is requested by John and Patty Mokins for June 20th, 2021 for a private event at VZ Park.
I make a motion, we approve the one-day liquor license for John and Patty Mokins for June 20th, 2021 for a private event at VZ Park.
It looked like all the paperwork was in order. Is there a second on that?
Second, where is all of our, is it in our packet?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
What a packet.
Any further discussion? We'll call for a vote. All in favor? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Catherine?
I just haven't collected the $50 fee yet.
All right, so we can...
I'll make a contingent upon collection of the $50 fee.
I'll second it.
Okay. Good motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor of granting the license? Unanimous?
Thanks.
Conservation, end-of-year transfers. Supplied from Conservation Commission is a list of requested transfers and where they're coming from.
Where, I have to find it, sorry. I'm lost in myself in this pile. Is it a one-page document?
Bill, you want to read that?
Does everybody have it? I don't think I saw that yet.
I'm not sure I have it either.
Wait, what's this? This might be it. I think I just found it.
Yeah, that's what I found.
Did it begin or did it end?
Um, I found it near the beginning, but my pile has been maneuvered, it's a sideways page.
Jason, you got it down there?
It looks like this.
No, I'm sure it's here.
It looks like this, if it helps.
Yeah.
It's a sideways page with numbers.
Very, very bad.
Like a spreadsheet.
Oh, I found it. So...
So, so these are the transfers that I think we have to do along with the Finance Board, right? We typically don't do this by ourselves, I don't think.
You want to read that, Bill?
What would you like me to read?
I'll read the transfers. Transfer from salary account.
Okay. Purpose, to spend the remaining unused agent salary funds on direct costs related to implementing and supporting the Wetlands Project Act and Town Wetlands Protection Bylaw and Regulations as required. Transfers from salary accountant, account, 9393 is the revenue and the transfer is to go to 7465 to laser fish support 2020 and 2021. Agent laptop, $1,000 and move WPA and bylaw files to archive in office for 9/28. The next, the purpose, to spend the unused stipend funds on remaining conservation expenses for the fiscal year. So transfers for the stipend account, $1,400. We have dog waste signs for placement of VZ Park for 300. Seven Star Road Property 13 to 14A registry fee, which is 250. Another signage at Lower Center Street area for 500 and office supplies of 350.
This, this is actually one of the best reasons for transfer that's listed that we've ever seen. It, it, the list of the transfer, the reasons why, and the dollar amounts. Anybody got any comment? Jason?
No.
Kathy?
Well, again, I think that we can vote this, but then I believe the Financial Board will have to vote as well. I don't think we can transfer on our own authority. We can transfer after May 1st, but I thought it was in conjunction with the Financial Board's vote as well. That's how we've done it in the past, and that was what the Department of Revenue told me a few months ago when I called up regarding our deficits. So, um, I guess I would wonder, you know, are there other, we have other deficits pending this year, and we don't have a lot of accounts to go to. I don't think we typically take conservation expenses and put them in other places, so I don't think this is a big issue, but it would be good to see a list of the other deficits that we're going to have to transfer for as well, so we know.
Not yet, we haven't had anything yet.
No, we have. We have had it. We know that there's a pending $55,000 deficit in the Financial Department, an impending deficit of $45,000 to $50,000 in the Fire Department.
Well, this is a, a transfer between their, their salary account and their stipend account. It's within, it's within their budget.
Yes, I, I understand that, too, and I, like I said, we do, we do do these, but we do them us and the, and the Financial Board, and we usually have a whole list for the whole budget for the year. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yep, I do.
Yeah. We usually have some kind of a list that has everything.
Do we want a motion for approval if we get approval from Finance, as we did on the last one? Go ahead, Dan.
I mean, if it saves time at town meeting, I think the, I think we have to procedurally reconcile with Finance Committee prior to town meeting. Isn't that how it's done?
Well, not prior to town meeting, prior to the end of this fiscal year.
Well, practically speaking, when will that occur?
June 30th.
So we're gonna do this in June?
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying no, but I'm also saying, do we have enough money in the other accounts? We don't need these funds for anything else? I mean, we're gonna let them go out and buy? I guess they need all this stuff, so we really don't... Remove all archive paper records currently at VZ Park, two town file site. I don't know what that is. Oh, well, seven star registry fee, of course, yes.
That's the chair.
I mean, I guess if you want to vote this list in, again, contingent on the Financial Board approving as well, you can, but we are still missing the list for the whole year.
Go ahead, Dan.
You know?
I, I think we don't have enough information, and there's gonna be other people on the other board that want, you know, are gonna have some input, and I'd kind of like to hear that, 'cause I gotta be honest with you, I don't, I don't know all these issues and the devil's in the detail, I really don't. So for me to, just for the, you know, for expediency purposes or just to move it along, I, I kind of feel like I'm not doing it justice without the people that actually have a vested stake in some of these line items. I don't.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, if you move money from one account to the other, I mean, I don't know that it impacts Daniel McDonald here, but somebody might say no and cry foul, and I don't know who those people are. I think we have to wait.
Well, it's not gonna be done at town meeting, you understand that.
Okay, so we do it thereafter? Maybe we need a joint committee, a, a joint committee meeting with the Finance Board and work out these details, these little wrinkles in the budget? And I, I think there are wrinkles in the budget that certainly we're hitting issues and stumbling blocks here. I just think we, I don't think we can accomplish task today on this.
Mr. Chair?
Whoops, here comes somebody.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, this is Rebecca Olden with Economic Development, Planning and Conservation Department. I'm sorry, I was in the waiting room for a while, so I just joined the meeting, but I have been listening. If there's particular questions regarding this request, please let me know, I'd be happy to answer them.
I was gonna ask if Mike or Rebecca was online, they could, might be able to shit them.
So Rebecca, is this time sensitive, or can we do this with all of the end-of-year transfers?
Typically, what I've been told in the past is that Denise would put forward a request for end-of-year transfers in May, and she would list that out with the Board of Selectmen, and then that would then go over to the Finance Committee, in which the Finance Committee would vote as well. They're not able to, or they, sorry, excuse me, must spend... the statutory requirement allows them to be, and that the funds must be expended prior to June 30th. And like you were saying, prior for the Council on Aging, you are correct. You can't use them for schools or anything like that. So, year-end transfers can start in May and must be expended by June 30th.
So, so we could approve this and send it, check it on to the Financial Board for their approval. It doesn't go anywhere till they approve it. But then, I guess I would ask if we could get an update on all the accounts and what's going on, because this is just one department.
I think that's something that we ought to run by the Finance Director.
Well, the accountant should know.
He'd probably be, be a better one to handle all that. Any other discussion here? How do we want to handle it? Table it? Vote it, vote it in?
No, I'll move favorable action. It doesn't move until the Financial Board moves favorable action. Nothing happens till they approve it.
I second that. That's what I was, I was going to recommend. We just vote favorable.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a question of clarity. Where did these requests come from? Were they were from the respective committees that are in tune with what it is they need? Where did these procreate up from?
Well, Rebecca is in charge of, or, yeah, well, yes, in charge of all these departments at this point. They all work together and coordinate together.
And they have requested those transfers?
Yes, and it is...
Well, they will come up short.
And they, and it's balanced. The other point, the other difference is this is balanced.
Just of it as if, let's just say, for the sake of illustration, that we just voted no. Then these people are going to come up short on their, on their spending?
On those line items.
Yes.
On line items.
Yeah.
And they've already planned on that. So, this is just moving sideways here, lateral movements.
Left pocket, right pocket.
Yeah.
That's it. There's not an increase in spending, it's just...
No, it balances out.
Sideways. Okay, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, all in favor? Posed? None?
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
You, too.
All business. Council on Aging and Director Hiring Committee. Jason, you want to, what, take that?
Yes, we actually met and went over the resumes and scheduled interviews for tomorrow, the first set of three interviews. So, next meeting, I'm sure I'll have a lot more information in regards to it.
Okay. Vote to the Board, nothing. Selectmen's time? Dan?
I'd like to go back to what I was talking about earlier. I've had a chance to read the agreement and the confidentiality statement on the agreement between the town and the interim Finance Director. So, with that, I don't see anything in there, in my opinion, that includes me from asking one question. And again, it's because I'm new to the Board here, and there are some things that impact the Board going forward, and they were, happened recently, so I'd like to ask this, and I think it's within the boundaries of the law and the agreement.
Dan, could I, could I hold you up for just a second?
Yes, sir.
I think that should be under, other items not reasonably anticipated, the next item.
Okay. They're just Selectmen time?
Yeah, this is Selectmen time.
I'll go on there. So, I have a chance to be heard on that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Sure, everybody can be heard.
All right, then, only Selectmen time to just say this. Thank you, it's good to be back. Couple of years off, few years off from the Board of Selectmen. Appreciate the people that supported me. The pandemic's been tough on everybody. I'd like to thank, excuse me, Michael Wood for six years of service. He's a father, he's married, you know. I know where that, know what that involves. So, the Board takes time away from your family, your friends, so I appreciate what he did.
Jason, you got anything?
Yes, I was talking to Rebecca, and she pointed out that the Bagnell School received an award for the, I'll make sure I get this right. Safe routes to schools. And it's really phenomenal when you think about it.
What is it?
And I'd like to recognize with Rebecca Principal Day.
Jim Day.
And his Vice Principal for the incredible job they did in keeping the students safe and getting recognized as top of the Northeast for their part in participating and putting together everything and keeping, especially during this extremely tough time, when a lot of people, parents were driving, there wasn't a lot of school buses being utilized, and it took a lot of effort. And Rebecca and I also discussed recognizing Chief Gillan and Lieutenant McDonald, because without their help, I'm sure none of this would have transpired. They are obviously very dedicated to their community, they spend a lot of time communicating and planning and making sure that everybody's safe. And I know, I really appreciate it. So, I just wanted to recognize them and thank them.
Thank you. Kathy?
No, I don't have a lot to say. I want to say, you know, thank you for a vote for Vice Chairman. I'm glad to step up, and, and I've watched the former Chairman and Vice Chairman and know it's a lot of work, and I rely on a lot of people's advice and, and judgment to fulfill the responsibilities. And I look forward to, to working with the whole Board, and I feel like we can agree to disagree on, on some things, but still abide by the, the rules and the parliamentary procedures that we're bound by, and that that will make a difference in our discourse, and that civil discourse is, is critical at this time, I think, for our town. Everybody's just coming out of a long, long lockup. They want everything to go back to normal. So do I. I mean, we all do. So, working towards that goal should maybe unite our Board and, and keep our, our eyes going forwards and, and help move this town forwards.
Bill?
Yeah, real quickly, we have another scheduled meeting of the High School Building Committee tomorrow, so I'll have more to report on that. And just one comment on the past election. I guess we had a little under 400 folks voting. That's really shameful. I, I don't know how else to describe it but shameful. It's been said and said before, folks, you get the government you deserve. So, God bless those 400 people. That's it.
I just have one thing. Anybody know what happened to the signboard out front? Is it broken or just nothing to put on it?
I have no idea. I'm, I'm working with the vendor. I guess they're trying to get it back up and running, but so far nothing happened.
It was working last week.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I got. Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting? Dan?
I have two.
Yeah?
First one is, we have town meeting coming up, and that's going to be open, some discussion as to how many people can handle, how many are permitted, but, you know, is town hall open as well? And if we're going to have town meeting, I think town hall should be open as well. Governor's approved it, as far as I know, but the town hall should be open for business as usual, and I think a reasonable lead time for that would be open it on the day of town meeting. So, open for business, and that would give the employees here some lead time to do what you got to do. But I think we got to go back to business as usual. We want people to come out and vote. We want people to come out and vote, attend town meeting. We all wear masks, so there's some reluctance as to whether or not there's still a problem or there isn't. If state guidelines approve removal of masks, then I'm in favor of that as well. That's one issue I have. I'd like to, and again, it's up for the Board, I think, whether anyone wants to go there, but...
Any comments, Jason?
No.
Kathy?
I wondered about if we can remove masks when speaking at town meeting, and I thought that'd be worth checking, because I think that communication is stilted with the mask, you know, and that it would be helpful to people that might want to speak to know whether or not they have to be masked up at the microphone. It could be, if there's a choice, then you could leave the mask on, but for people that don't want to, that feel they can't speak through the mask, it would make it more fair, I think.
Well, couldn't we set a microphone up in an area that allowed for such social distancing that masks wouldn't be required at that?
That's what I'm wondering, if we could do that. I think that would be very good. And you saw the auditor asked if he could, you know, remove his mask when speaking, because obviously I'm more clear when I'm not masked up, right? And so, too...
Not to speak, and I fog up my glasses, I can't, you know, it's ridiculous. You know? I'm exhaling, and it's going up, I'm watching, you know?
Exactly.
Well, I think we can check into this. We can check in, because the state is changing guidelines rapidly right now, you know, so maybe you're right. If we can set up the speakers in such a way that they're, you know, 10 feet from where people are and ask people to line up six feet apart at the mic, if they, that way you could remove your mask when you speak.
We're getting a little off, off-topic, it was on opening up town hall.
Oh, I thought he talked about the mask, too. Didn't you?
Well, both, yes. Town, I'd like to open town hall.
I jumped on the mask issue.
Is there anybody that's supportive of that?
Oh, no, town hall, I believe we should open. I think given a couple of weeks' lead time for the workers here to, to give us feedback, but we did buy them everything, I think, that they need to open up with the shields and the Purell. I think we have all those supplies. If not, then let's get them.
You know, I hear other towns are open. I mean, you know, I mean...
Things are changing rapidly right now.
The city halls are open. I mean, they might have a capacity limit, but I don't think this town has a capacity limit. I don't think there's going to be more than 250 people in town hall at any given moment. I really don't. But I think, my wife's from Lynn, and her family still lives there, and city hall's open in Lynn, I think they have a 250 capacity. So, are we really going to have 250 people come down here and get a marriage certificate, a death certificate, and a, and a, a dog license? I don't know, it could happen. So, but...
Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, I think some of the largest concerns are the Council of Aging, because I don't think they have a divider.
Okay.
Where people can come in and they can communicate behind the plexiglass. So, I know that's something that was brought up, and in terms of maybe restructuring when the water department moves out.
They're still not moved out?
Let me compose myself.
So, I think we have to take that into consideration when we think about opening up town hall. And I think it's something that, I think somebody's going to have to really come down, speak with the employees, and then present it to the Board, so we have a real clear idea of what needs to happen and where we need to go to make it happen.
So, good points.
Do you think that something like that could be accomplished in two weeks?
I think, I think so. I think so. So, as long as we can get the input from everybody at town hall, their concerns, how we can develop a plan to make sure that we address all of their concerns. And one area that's going to be very difficult at the current time, like I said, is the Council of Aging.
Well, I wanted to ask, is the, is the water and sewer collecting money here, or are they collecting down at their new site? Because if they're not using the counter for collection, then why can't we switch the two?
I don't even think they're in the other building, but I'm not sure.
They're not even using the other building?
Not sure, I really...
Not completed yet.
Not yet.
What?
They're not in the other building yet. The, the workers are working out of there, they've, they got, the offices hasn't moved, but the, the workers are working out of there. They report there in the morning, the trucks are parked there, but the office hasn't moved. I don't know if it's ready yet.
So, the water and collection person is in this building? Oh.
Bill, comment?
No.
None? Well, I had, I mentioned several times that I thought that it was way past time for the town hall to open. I think the barriers are in place. I think within two weeks, we should have everything set. Everything else is opened up, most of, most of them. I've been up to city hall about three times. It's, you, you walk right in and you, you do your business, and then you leave. And others are open. So, I think it's time, so I have to agree with Kathy, Dan, that time to open up. Motion?
Mr. Chair, I mean, is it not how we handle it? Motion open at...
What about the Council on Aging, though? What are we going to set up for them? They don't have a divider.
Jason said that within two weeks, they, you're going to work with...
Well, we have to find out. Before, before we commit to actually opening, I think we need to make sure that we actually have everything in place. So, I think somebody should be appointed to gather the information and confirm that, yes, the employees are going to be ready, and that everything is going to be in place.
Okay. You want me to do that?
I think you should.
Okay. You think I should?
I think you should.
Okay. Go ahead.
I mean, if they have two weeks' notice, I mean, you can work towards that goal, but if we just, if I, if I motion the Board to open on the same day, the morning of the town meeting, they got lead time. Make it, make it happen.
Well, I don't know if they have any barriers there, or the, the plastic shields that up at the Council on Aging, but that's probably not, they don't, there's probably something that could be done in, within two weeks.
I don't know, because of the restrictions on the size of the office.
The office is very small.
We only got one person working in there right now.
At the moment, yeah. So, it's something that needs to be investigated and properly determined.
Should Sam, should the building inspector take a look and tell us what might, might be able to work, or, or should we be looking at other office space?
I think you can ask him if, if that's something that he's willing and capable of doing. But, I mean, realistically, it should be the Board of Health, I would think, because...
Right.
They, they should know the guidelines, and they should be able to come in and say, hey, this is what we need to put in place, this is how we're going to do it, and make it happen.
Yep, I can contact Deb Hall about that. And have her get, weigh in on that.
All right, well, we'll both be here in the morning, so we can, we can look into that.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, Dan, you're still up, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Now, did you want, we want to make a motion on that? You want to make a motion other than Council on Aging and get, try to get them straightened out?
How about this?
Go ahead.
We've got other motions contingent upon.
Yep, go for it.
I'll make a motion that we open town hall on the morning of the town meeting day, whatever that is.
May 24th.
Contingent upon Council on Aging, is it?
Yes.
Meeting state guidelines on safety protocols.
Yep.
Period.
Is there a second? Hearing none? The, I can second, I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yeah, Bill?
Yes, I have some. I, I guess, it was Friday, so it was three days ago. There was a very robust discussion about town meeting, and we're still in the midst of a pandemic. I think those were your exact words, Selectman McDonald.
Yes.
So, in the three days that has transpired since Friday, we, the epidemic is gone.
It's not.
Then we're, well, I don't understand, are we still in it, or we still, are we not in it?
You have time for my answer.
I don't, if it's based on fact, yes. If it's based on...
Go ahead.
High in the sky...
Well, there's a lot of mixed emotions going on. There are a certain percentage of people, I think it's somewhere around, and I don't want to be, give us the fake news about 30% of the people vaccinated. You agree with me on that, or would you like to...
Again, are we talking statewide, are we talking...
So, so, I'll make it, I'll make a distinction between opening town hall and town meeting. So, so I'll make it, I'll make a distinction between opening Town Hall and town meeting. Town meeting, we need at least 100 people for a quorum, last time I checked. Does anybody know that it's not true?
It's true.
We need 100 people, that's a lot of people. And up until now, I've heard everybody from Joe Biden saying maybe by the 4th of July, we could have some small gatherings of roasted weenies or something, okay? So now we're going to have a town meeting with over 100 people. We have, what, about 5,000 voters in the town? So we're lucky if we get a quorum, okay? I don't think that's representative of a change in government form, which I believe is significant, and you can beg to differ. But like I've said, and I'm consistent on what I've said about, you know, opening Town Hall, it may be removed with masks because there's such low volume in this town. How many people are coming in for a marriage certificate on a daily basis or a dog license? You can go online and do a lot of it. So that actually has minimized the foot traffic at Town Hall. But there are some people that aren't computer savvy or for whatever reason, or maybe they're inoculated and they feel safe and they want to go out and out and live their lives and be free citizens of not only Groveland, but the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the United States of America, and they are tired of being restricted. So I would like to pass something on to those people to go out and about your business and come down to Town Hall. But we certainly send a mixed message when we say that it's not safe to go to work or safe to open up Town Hall, and yet we expect to have our democracy function at a town meeting. So, you know, there are inconsistencies in policy every, every, from here all the way up to Mr. Biden, President Biden. So we need to address those issues. I want to clarify them. I welcome debate on them, they're our issues. You know, my situation is different from other people's situation, my health, my station in life, et cetera. So some people may not be comfortable coming into town meeting. Is there an opportunity to vote remotely from town, at town meeting? It would be nice if they could. We don't have that mechanism. We do have mail-in ballots if it was on a general ballot, which I addressed that issue. I thought the significance of that town administrator position should be a ballot question. Why? Because that would solve some of those problems. And those decisions would be made at the individual level, not from top-down management or government imposing them on you. So people that were comfortable with a mail-in ballot or a proxy vote or something like that could actually participate in the democratic process. Whereas the town meeting, if you're uncomfortable or reluctant because of your health reasons, and that's a privacy issue, it should be hyper-protected. As far as I'm concerned, it's no one's business whether or not you're vaccinated or you are. However, there's a, you know, public policy seems to step all over that. So that's, have I answered your question?
No. The inconsistencies didn't start with President Biden. They started months before that with injecting Lysol to clear up the thing. But we're also talking about a very spacious Bagnell gymnasium with tremendous amount of ventilation, where most of the offices in this building are very small. For example, the town clerk, you walk in there, it's a two-by-two. That's it. I don't know how anyone can socially distance in that little area. It's impossible. And most of the offices are actually configured the same exact way. They don't have a lot of room, they don't have a lot of ventilation. There aren't a lot of windows you can open up to, to get that proper ventilation, where the Bagnell cafeteria is, is the, I mean, it's night and day. You're talking apples to trolley cars in comparisons to some of these small offices to the huge cafeteria. I, I, maybe spatially, I don't know, maybe you have difficulty kind of envisioning the massive, maybe you haven't been at Bagnell for a while, I don't know. It's a massive with high ceilings, open windows, open doors, where you don't have the luxury in these small offices here, and they're all small.
So I'm wondering if there could be a compromise on this.
At what point do we open, Selectman O'Neill? How do you foresee it? I mean, it just, you know, I'm listening to you, I listen.
Selectman McDonald, if I knew all the answers, you know what? I'd have picked Medina Spirit to win the Kentucky Derby. But I don't have a crystal ball, unlike some people here. I can't predict the future. If I could, I'm sure I'd be in a different place right now if I could. So to accurately ask me, when is this going to be over? I don't know. I'm trying to follow the science as well as anybody else. But if anybody out there has a date on the calendar that they can say, this is it, after what we've seen in India, when they thought it was over, I don't know, you can do that. But hey, maybe your crystal ball is better than mine. I don't.
Well, and I look at the fact that you, you go to Market Basket, you go to the grocery store, you, nobody is six feet away from anybody else. The only time that, probably in the grocery store that you are is if you're standing in line. Other than that, you're shoulder to shoulder, they got, even though they have the one ways, you're shoulder to shoulder with people, you're passing, you're passing people in those narrow aisles. So you can do that, the same thing you go to a department store, the same thing you go to Home Depot. You're passing these people within, within the six-foot recommended. So I, I agree. Schools are open, it's, it's time to open up the Town Hall.
If I could.
Now, go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm feeling that I certainly don't want to shove something down the throats of the people that have been working here for our town through this pandemic without complaining. And in particular, the council on aging that I know did a tremendous amount of outreach during the vaccination, I mean, just a tremendous amount. And, and I applaud them for all their hard work because it makes a difference. And I want to support them as they come out of this. So when I came down to vote, I noticed how well set up this room was with the shields and all. And I thought, well, this room's pretty big, maybe some people could choose to meet people in this room with the shields up, and maybe part of the hallways could be blocked off so that people can't go down to the smaller offices. And there could be, I mean, I think there needs to be a little prep, there needs to be some decision. It's not a matter of let, open the doors up, take your mask off and run in. We're not there yet. In, in the school, a close contact is considered to be within three feet of a student for 15 minutes or more. Now, that 15 minutes or more could happen as somebody here is trying to meet with a taxpayer and explain something and walk them through that. So I'm trying to, to say that they would need the protective shield to have that longer conversation. They should have it at this point because you don't know who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated. I can tell you, my personal experience working within a population in the school, that the virus is still out there, there are still people who are quarantined and becoming ill. It's still happening. It's better, it's so much better than it was. I don't want to take away hope. I think we are moving in a great and the right direction. But shouldn't we maybe talk with our Board of Health? Have somebody take a look at this Town Hall setup? Determine what kind of signage needs to be up with masking? And people who want to see the same person in the same office will have to wait outside. You can't have multiple people waiting at a counter in an office because that would be within three feet for 15 minutes or more, depending on what goes on. And I see, you know, you don't know how, you don't realize 15 minutes has gone by in some ways. You know what I mean? You might not realize that as you're crowding behind somebody and talking. And I just feel that we owe them this in this Town Hall, to give them the same protections that the other offices all have. I saw the, the voting thing, it was fantastic. You know, they had the plastic shields, the spacing, it was, and the hallways were cut off so the people couldn't go all the way walking around. And I just feel that we should say that we want to open. I don't feel that we have to make a hard cast vote. I think that we just need to start the conversation going in that direction, and it will happen. I don't, I don't think anybody wants to keep our Town Hall closed forever. None of us want that, and I think we just have to work through it. I don't think it's a, we don't have to slam our fist on the table.
Kathy, you're starting to repeat yourself.
I am, I'm sorry. I apologize. Go ahead.
I mean, we don't have consensus here, so we'll just have to wait and see. I mean, but other towns have done things to what you've suggested, where you wait outside, there might be numbered parking spots or some sort of orderly procession. So there's only one person in front of the town clerk at a time. There's a plexiglass, whatever, partition there, and there's distance maintained. So I think some sort of procedure, SOP, some orderly process would be the compromised solution and the safe way to go. And our other side of caution always, I don't want to see anyone get sick and get hurt. But not for its people. I've been back in town politics in a few years, but the, a recurring theme was, Dan, get Town Hall open. Okay? So I listen to people, I do a lot of talking, but I also, I do a lot of listening. So I think it's important at some point in time in the near future, and certainly the safety of the Town Hall employees is paramount a point. Elderly people are especially at risk, people that have health, underlying health issues. So, so we can get some feedback from them, okay? I'm not against it.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor in a second. Open Town Hall the morning of the town meeting, two weeks. Any further discussion? No? All in favor? All opposed? Motion fails. Need further discussion? You had something else.
My second issue there, I've read the agreement, read the interim finance director, cognizant of the confidentiality agreement. I will not intrude on that in any way. However, as a new member of the board, I always wonder what came before me and what comes after, okay? It's, you know, flow, okay? We are everything that preceded us, and this, you know, just continues. So this is my question. Can be subject to Town Council approval.
If you want to take off your mask when you speak, I'm fine with that.
Feedback, thank you, because it's driving me nuts. This is my question, because, you know, and again, I'm from a distance, and I don't know all the ins and outs of who, what, when, where, how, and why, and I'm honest about that. But, you know, I can say here that I, I like certain people. So this is my question. Would both parties be willing to discuss and consider rescinding the agreement? Okay? That was agreed to between the town, through the Board of Selectmen, and the interim finance, financial, finance director. Would they be willing to consider that? And, and here's, here's my reason for that. Suppose we go forward two weeks and Town Meeting votes on Town Administrator. We still have a gap. So problem is if the agreement is through, I think it's, what, May 31st? Right, we can talk about what is, we're not talking about. How long is it going to take us to get a Town Administrator? So then what do we do? So, and we need another pinch hitter. So I think it's worth discussing. And, you know, I don't, I can't get in my time capsule, and I wasn't on the board, and I don't have legal standing here to even really address that issue other than a taxpayer and a citizen. But I'd like to, through the chairman, ask that question, whether or not the parties would be willing to discuss rescinding the termination agreement between those parties. That's my issue.
So what you're looking for is?
And, and again, because of executive session rules, you know, tread carefully, stepping on eggshells to protect the interest of all parties. That's what it's for, privacy, et cetera. And I don't know if that would have to be through Town Council reaching out, saying, would you be willing to go into an executive session or waive executive session? But part of it is a curiosity, meaning what happened. Now, right now, we can't discuss that, there's an agreement. But as a taxpayer and a citizen, I kind of want to know. So what happened?
Were you, withdraw the resignation, is that what it was?
To, to rescind the, I think it's called the termination agreement? I mean, I don't want to fault me if, the, to rescind the employment settlement agreement. And, and here's another thing. And again, I'm late to the party, okay? So what transpired and what happened, how can you know what to do right going forward if you don't know what happened in the past? So again, I want to know who, what, when, where, how, and why. And I think that'll make me a better decision-maker, whether if I get to the point where I vote on a Town Administrator. What type of person do we want? What type of person do we not? What are the functions? What went wrong, what went right? So I want to be able to go through all of that, and I don't have the privilege even knowing. So I'm asking if, if, if we could either go into executive session and ask that question, and it might just be, no, I'm all done, I don't want to do it. But again, I can't speak for, I can't speak for you or Kevin or anyone else, I can only speak for me. So that's my question, whether both, whether both parties would consider discussing rescinding the agreement between the Town of Groveland and the interim financial director.
Okay, and both, both parties would be, would be the Board of Selectmen and?
Who have assigned it? Who have assigned it?
I don't know if I get a signed copy.
The copy I have, it isn't signed. So I don't know if it was ever executed, if this was the final version of it, I don't know. I don't have, I don't have an executed copy of the agreement.
So if you want to put this on a future agenda for an executive session, I suppose you could. But I don't think you can do this open session at all. Absolutely not.
I, based on the terms of the agreement, I do not feel comfortable talking at this subject in open meeting whatsoever.
We've got to protect the town.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could request, I mean, an agenda item for an executive session, and it would be up to respective parties, whether or not they choose to or not choose to waive executive session.
Kathy, do you have a, who signed the, who signed the really, employment settlement agreement?
I do not. I don't personally have a copy of it. I don't know, maybe Mike had it, Mike was.
It was in our package. So do you need?
Yeah, but it's not signed.
It's just a copy of it.
Oh, so you want a copy of the signed copy? I brought one down because then I saw that one, I thought you were all set.
I don't have a copy of it.
Oh, okay, you can make a copy of my copy.
We're two fully executed documents, one signed by the four of us.
Correct.
And, and, and Mr. Baykos and his legal counsel.
I don't think I ever saw it from Kevin and his counsel. I know I saw it from this board, but I don't think I ever saw it from the other one.
I'm, I'm sorry, you, you said what, what, what was that again?
I never saw the fully executed copy. I only saw the copy from the four board members that signed it. And I don't know what happened to it after that.
Town Council must.
Town Council must have a copy because there would have been.
Yeah, I don't have this.
Is there a particular time you want to try to set up an executive session? Of course, the, Kevin, if he wants to participate, would, he could have it in open, open session.
So I'm saying, can we just add it?
No, I won't do it in open session.
Can we just?
Absolutely not.
Can we?
And I will report that.
Can we just add it to the next meeting prior to, by a half hour? I mean, it, it, it just, again, this is supposition, it might just be null. And then it's a moot issue.
Okay.
Well, the, the next meeting is before the Town Meeting, and I think, Jason, you wanted, prior to the Town Meeting, when, when we have our, have our meeting.
Yes.
Are you wanted Kevin there to answer some questions?
I just made a suggestion that it might be a good idea to make sure, but I wasn't talking about directly before Town Meeting.
No, yeah, I think we get his answers in advance.
Yeah, we need his answers in advance.
We need what, in advance?
We need his, his answers in advance prior to that.
Because we typically spend the half hour before Town Meeting with Bill Hewig.
Yes.
Working out the motions, and I don't want to give up that half an hour of Town Council. That's a very important time.
Do you want to try to set something up for a week from today, the 17th of May?
I think that would be wise.
We can try to do that.
I'm not sure what you're trying to set up, so I'm not certain if I'm comfortable with this.
Once, once these, ask both parties to discuss rescinding employment separation agreement.
I'm, I'm not comfortable with that, that's not what I'm discussing. So no.
I wasn't discussing that either.
I won't go.
And?
I won't pretend that.
You're looking for an agenda item for an executive session?
I'll be contacting our Town Council.
What's that about, Town Council?
I am planning on myself, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, to contact Town Council.
And, well, he, he would have to be part of it.
My votes. No, I'm not comfortable with what you're trying to pull off here. I just don't understand what you're trying to pull off and the change in the words.
What am I trying to pull off other than find out?
You can find out by having a conversation with one member of our board. We're allowed to talk one-on-one each other. You could talk to any one member of our board, and they could discuss with you everything, all that up to it. But I, at this point in time, am completely uncomfortable with. am completely uncomfortable with trying to maneuver into a, I don't know, what kind of meeting. I, I value the town, and I want to do what's right for the town, but there's always more than one path to success, and I want to move forward, not backwards. So that's where I'm at. I'm, I just want to take care of the town.
Well, how is?
Are we done now?
I was asking both parties if they want to discuss it.
Oh, I think I made myself clear.
I don't see where that's, I, I don't see where that part is the problem. What, what do you feel is the problem? Discussing it altogether? What do you see is the problem?
I don't feel this conversation is appropriate right now at all. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 8:41 PM.
I'll second that motion.
Well, we haven't, we got a motion and a second. We haven't finished the items, so all in favor? Oppose? 3-2. Well, I know what you mean, but.